Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting of April 9th. We're meeting in the Emergency Management Building, the William Belden Training Room. We'll be meeting with the Finance Committee after we take care of a few agenda items this evening. First off, under announcements, just want to remind people, I'm sure you've seen the -- excuse me, the signs around town that the high school will be performing Shrek the Musical next week at the Hatfield Elementary School, so you should order your tickets. I'm sure you can get them at the door, but always better to get them in advance so you're sure to get the proper evening or performance that you're looking for. Also on Wednesday, May 2nd, at the Hatfield Elementary School, there'll be a presentation of Resilience, and it's about the Biology of Stress and the Science of Hope. So, there's going to be a one-hour documentary screening and a presentation. So if anybody's interested, you can contact 247-5641, just to reserve a spot and make sure that you're able to get seating for that event. Ed, did you have anything under announcements?
No.
Marlene, did you have anything that you needed to -- under announcements?
I have nothing.
Yep, yep, those two things. Okay, great, thanks. Is there anybody here for the public forum? The approval of payroll and AP warrants, I don't think there were any new ones presented tonight, right? I think that's just kind of a standard agenda item. Should there be one, or did I miss something? There is? Okay.
voucher number 1037?
Ah, got it. Yep, thank you, sorry about that. All right, so I'll make a motion, it's town and Hat, that we approve the voucher number 1037 in the amount of $73,721.87.
I'll second it.
Is there any -- we've already reviewed these. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Sorry I missed that. Approval of the water and sewer commitment. So this came from the town collector, and this is a standard procedure, I believe. Is that correct, Marlene, that we do?
Yes. This is batch number two.
Yep.
We just sent out.
Okay. So Board of Selectmen, this is a collection of, yes, everybody I'm sure received your water bills. So this is just the official approval of that. The total amount committed for collection is $422,198.92. So I'll make the motion to approve the amount as submitted by the town collector.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. 350th Anniversary Committee is looking to change the number of members appointed by the Board of Selectmen from seven to nine, especially with summer coming, so that there's always enough folks to have a quorum as they're making decisions moving forward. Also along those lines, they've requested that the appointment be made, and I'll make this motion, by the way, of Lino Mastha to the 350th Anniversary Committee. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion?
No, I just want to thank Lino Mastha for stepping forward on being on the committee.
Yep, and the others as well. There's all -- lots of progress taking place, so thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right.
Is the board going to increase the membership from seven to nine?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, I kind of lumped it all in one, so I guess you want a separate vote to make it official?
Just for the record?
Yep, absolutely, so I'll make a motion to increase the number of members on the Anniversary Committee, for 350th Anniversary Committee, from seven to nine.
Okay, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I was on a roll, Marlene.
Sorry.
No, it's why I missed it. That's why I missed it. Thank you.
I didn't know if I had missed it and you had seen that.
No, you didn't. Okay, did you want to speak to the ambulance billing?
Yes, just to report that, you know, the fire chief has submitted the activity summary report for ambulance billing. This is up through March, and as you will see, that currently we have collected $70,230.8.
Through March?
Through March.
Settle from last July through March, so that's great?
Correct.
Okay. So there's no action necessary, this was just a?
Just information.
Information only. Okay. We also had something from a DPW, do we need to address that?
Yes, just to acknowledge receipt of that, and then we'll schedule a meeting at a later time to hear that.
Okay, so we've received a DPW grievance form from one of the union members, so we'll take that up at a later date, but we did receive it, so. Okay. Any continued old business?
None.
Great. Any unanticipated new business?
Not at this time.
Okay, excellent. All right, so we'll be meeting with the Finance Committee shortly, so, John, thanks. All right, thank you. We are now joined by some of the department heads in town, as well as the Finance Committee, so we will continue to review the budget and articles for upcoming town meeting. So, Darrell, did you want to say something?
Yeah. Hello, well, I'm going to try and give, and hopefully with the help of Brian and Marlene, hopefully, update of what's kind of happened in the last two weeks, and if townspeople remember, about two weeks ago, we were reviewing the budget, and we were talking, we, at that point, I think we had, we were somewhere around $300,000 under the levy limit. Is that right, Marlene?
That's correct.
And feeling kind of okay about the budget. Fortunately, Marlene and her staff at the Town Hall did their due diligence in looking at the spreadsheet and making sure that things were put in correctly. In particular, there were some loans missing that had not been put into the spreadsheet, so we spent quite, we, they spent quite a bit of time reviewing that. Unfortunately now, we are $293,000.
Thousand dollars?
$293,000 over the levy limit, so, one of the reasons we did not meet last week is we wanted to get confirmation that the numbers we were looking at were correct. Marlene talked with Justin Cole from Bay State Accounting. She spent a lot of time with former Treasurer Louise Slish over the weekend and today, confirming things. She spent a lot of time with the Treasurer, Edwina and Sharon, going over the numbers. We've reached out to Terry Williams from our -- we. Marlene has reached out to Terry Williams from DOR, who's really the, it's kind of his spreadsheet, so nobody knows it any better than Terry. Unfortunately, Terry had a death in the family, I think his mom passed away, and so he was out all last week, so condolences to him, but he, so hopefully Terry will have a chance to take a look at it, but me personally, I feel pretty good about the numbers and the way things are put in. Louise certainly was comfortable. There have been changes since we spoke, and Marlene, you'll have to help remind me. I know the school, we had asked the school at the last meeting if they could see their way to finding some money in the budget, and they did find some money in the budget.
They did reduce their?
They reduced theirs, and I want to kind of remind everybody here, if you go to the change number, so, it's kind of on page two in the middle, those are all the numbers where things have changed. One of the things I need to remind everybody of, because Marlene had to constantly remind me, is at the special town meeting, that there were many departments gave money back, and so, we had said that we would not hold that against them. So some of the, some of the numbers look higher than they should, because we did in fact put those numbers back in. School, and I won't even try to name all the departments, but is that, is that correct?
Right, there were some appropriations at town meeting, and $49,630 is what was the total that was given up by all the departments. So that, so the action of the special town meeting is referenced on the financial summary page, and under expenses, if you look down, see prior special town meeting actions, and the $49,630 was a reduction, however, there were other appropriations, you know, from stabilization, and actually, three stabilization funds.
You're right, three stabilization funds.
We tapped into. So that, that number reflects the action taken at the January special town meeting, so that has, you know, that's under fiscal year 18 though, obviously.
Right.
So if you look at the operating budget, previously, the change column?
Yes.
After the total, you know, recommended budget, the change, when we met previously, that included the money that appeared to be in addition, but it was really money we were giving back to them. So I changed that up. I changed how that appears.
So now that line is in fact only the changes?
Actual?
Actual changes.
Correct.
So, in the budget, as we go through on the line changing 18 to 19, that number represents the change over the original appropriation at last May's town meeting, not anything that happened after that?
No.
You're talking about the fiscal?
It does take, it does take in account what happened at the --
In January.
In January.
That first page, the financial summary?
Yes.
No, no, I'm just talking about as you go through the budget lines.
Okay, the fiscal year?
There's a whole column called change FY '18 to '19, it's always in there.
Correct.
Does that change represent?
No.
A difference between last May's town meeting and what's here?
No.
No.
No, includes everything that's happened, so as amended.
Correct. So what's in the fiscal year 18 is what was authorized at the annual town meeting last year for '18.
Right.
The special town meeting changes?
Is not in that line.
Is not in that line.
Okay, so it's as done at the May town meeting of FY '18.
Right.
The changes column is.
Right.
The changes column.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
Right.
So the difference, the change in '18 and '19 are actual increases.
Right. Right.
All right, okay. And just a quick welcome back to Sean Berry to the Finance Committee. Sorry I didn't do that earlier.
That's quite all right.
So, the other things, so, Marlene and I spent a lot of time talking about the loans in the last two weeks, and trying to make sure that they were put in there appropriately. We have some debt exclusions, we worked to make sure that the debt, or, I asked the questions, Marlene did the work. So Marlene worked hard at making sure that the debt exclusions were in fact put in correctly.
Correct. I checked all the formulas, and so on that first page, it was not picking up the entire debt exclusion for the water.
Right.
The principal and interest on the second page, and so when I corrected that, that's what increased the levy limit.
That was the, right.
That was, that was it. So if you look at this page, the summary page, you can see from '18, we went from a debt exclusion of $133,483 to $226,378. I've reviewed all those numbers, actually Louise checked those numbers, that is accurate.
Right. And the only, the other thing we found out about loans was that, and this was Louise, do you want to talk about that, the loans in anticipation of grants?
Correct. So there are a few loans that we anticipate receiving funds through a grant, and what was explained to me is, it's a, so the authorization was a borrow, but we are anticipating a grant.
Right.
The type of borrowing is a grant anticipation borrowing, and, so once the money starts coming in, you use that money to cover your principal.
Pay down.
Usually the principal, pay it down. So Edwina and I talked this morning, and we're, Edwina is actually working with the financial advisor, and she received some information late this afternoon, but she hasn't had a chance to follow up with the financial advisor, so we're going to get together tomorrow, but it appears that we may be able to restructure some of those borrowings.
So that would be in particular on, I don't know what page this is, but it's line 76, which is energy savings principle, that's $66,216.
Right.
So that, you know, if, if that works out well, that would then come off the taxation side, lower the levy limit.
Those items that I have colored, I don't know if it's in your version?
It's colored, yes.
Okay, so those are some things we're working on.
Yep.
Again, money that, that came in from the state, we should be covering those, so that's what we're looking into.
And is that the school roof windows principle too?
Correct.
So that would be $34,000. Then, the, the short-term interest and issuance?
We had not funded that, that was not, did not have a number plugged into it, and it was recommended that we plug a number in into that, $100.
Right, so we put $100 into that.
Right. The highway garage repairs, so we understand that project has not started, so we should have not?
We shouldn't have borrowed the money.
We should not have borrowed. It was done in May of last year, we should not have done that. So we are looking at restructuring that. It's possible that when we renew that?
They may give us another?
We renew that, that we would just have to pay the interest, we won't have, they'll delay the principal. Is that correct, Edwina?
Yes.
Yeah, so that, that would be about a $10,000.
As I say, please have her?
Savings.
Edwina, please feel free to interject.
I'm just curious, under public safety, just a small error, so I'm seeing $3,500, and it's equaling out at the bottom to $5,750.
I'm sorry, where are you at, Sean?
Line, right under 44, public safety total. I just want to make sure the spreadsheet is correct in general.
Okay.
Am I missing something that should be in that column?
And you're in the recommended, the five?
No, I'm looking at the change column. So I'm seeing $3,500.
Public safety.
And then I'm seeing it totaling out at $5,750, but I'm not finding, not 10.
The 35, yeah.
So I just want to make sure that, you know, formulas aren't messed up in this, and we're not looking at something that could be off. There.
So this form, you're talking about the $5,750?
Yeah, yeah.
So this is L54, which is this number?
Yep.
Okay, let me go back to here. L54 minus F54, and F54 is the diff, so that's fiscal year 18?
But yet, under the change above, we only have, it only lists $3,500 change. There should be, there should be some other?
Something's not up there.
Something's missing up in that line.
It's small, but I just want to make sure it's not indicative.
See where the $3,500 is?
Correct.
So?
So there's nothing else in there.
Yeah, there's nothing else. There should be something in that column, there should be $2,250 somewhere in there, indicating?
Adds up to $5,750.
Right.
Well, this, okay, unless I'm missing, the $5,750 is the difference between the fiscal year 18?
Right.
Budget.
Fiscal year 18.
18, which is the $580,413.
Yeah.
And the current recommended, $586,163.
We get, we get that, but?
Okay, so that's not?
Up above, there should be a, there should be something in the change which indicates what else is up, what else caused that change.
In other words, there's nothing above it, Marlene, in that column. $3,500 plus what? They're all, they all have a dash, they all, you know what I mean? There's no?
Right, all the others?
Shouldn't there be a $2,200 somewhere?
There should be, yeah.
That's what we're saying. There should be something that totals $2,200.
They don't add up.
$5,750, no?
Yeah.
Isn't that how you?
Yeah.
Because you're going from top to bottom, not necessarily just left to right?
Yeah, they should all equal out, really.
Yeah, it should all, yeah, it should all equal out. Some more?
Well, because those are all level funded budgets. That's why there isn't a difference.
That doesn't have?
But, but how?
So if you look at the recommended budget, and then look at what the current budget is, for example, let's take, what line is this? Inspection Services. Total budget for the fiscal year 18 is $78,671. So then, all right, so that should be?
There should be an increase there.
Yeah.
And this next section, same thing, under the school committee, school budget vocational tuition.
But it is level, it is, so the requested is $78,671, but the current budget for this fiscal year is $71,514. So all the departments, with the exception of a few, are level services, there aren't any increases.
I know.
So these lines that just have dashes, that's a level services budget.
Right, but is the bottom column a sum, a summary?
This one here?
Yes.
That should be a sum.
No, it's, it's the difference, this is the difference column of the totals here.
Yeah, no, I know that, but it should work both ways.
It should work both ways. There should be, there should be something not, not that high.
So again, if you go up here, this, so if you go to this one, the same thing.
That 120 should equal same thing, but?
But it's not the way it's formulated.
All the way to the top to the bottom.
That column does not formulate that way.
So then can you just describe one more time how it does work then? Because this is different than how I normally would read it.
So the change column, the change column does, for each line item, go, each row?
Yep.
Each row does give you the change, if there is a change.
For left or right?
Correct.
Not top to bottom.
When you go to the to, when you go to the bottom?
Yeah.
Like for example, example, general government total?
Yeah.
That's the last line, that change column, this number here, the total, reflects the difference between the current fiscal year and the proposed fiscal year.
Okay, so how do you know what makes up $120,438? What is that made up from?
Yeah.
I understand it's a difference.
Right, I understand what you're saying.
There still should be a change.
But those other two columns are totaling.
I can change this, it'll take some, I can't do it now, it'll take too long to do that.
Okay.
But I can go in and change all those formulas, if that's the way you'd like to read.
I mean?
It makes, I'd have to check and see if that's going to affect any other places in the spreadsheet. There's so many components to this.
Okay. I mean, otherwise, we need a calculator for pretty much every line, because we got to figure out where the changes come from.
Right, so I understand what you're saying, you're looking for the total change in that?
Right, what makes up those numbers.
In local government.
Right, so what I'm thinking is that if you, if you clicked on 12438?
Mm-hmm.
And you hit auto sum at the top there?
Mm-hmm, it would pull all those?
Come up to be 12438 somehow, you know, like?
Right, but that's just not the way it was set up.
It's not forming, I understand.
That wasn't set up that way. I mean, this is the way we've been using it for a long time.
Okay.
I didn't change this.
No, and I don't necessarily think it makes it inaccurate, I just think it, it makes the, the change FY '18 to '19 column irrelevant in a way, because not everything apparently is in there, or what?
Right.
So really, we have no, well, yeah, we have to pull out, we have to literally, yeah, do it by hand.
Yeah, so I, yes, you don't see what the total change is in the change column.
Per department, yeah.
Per line, yeah.
Per line, yeah.
My only concern is if I do this, I need to make sure that it's not, it doesn't have an impact on other places in the, in the workbook.
Yeah. So, I'm going to go back to the loans where we were talking about, so we had, we had talked about the highway garage, restructuring that, and then below that, now, Town Hall renovations?
The reason that is highlighted is only because there was a question about the interest. Usually the interest goes down, in this case, it's increasing, so we're just going to check on that.
The Phase 1?
Correct.
Okay, and then, Smith Academy Park?
That is also a grant.
That's also a grant, but my understanding is the project has to be completed before we even get our money back.
That's correct. We have to fund all the expenses and?
So can we still set it up, Edwina, so that, so instead of that money coming from taxation, it comes from the grant?
I didn't hear the first part of your question.
The Smith Academy Park?
Yeah.
Principal and interest, that's?
That's a grant.
That's a grant, so can we, can that be reset up, instead of coming out of taxation, that it gets paid by the grant, not taxation?
Yes, when it comes to, we can rewrite that as a grant loan, which now it's combined with two other pieces.
Okay.
So we need to separate it out, number one, and then set it up as a grant loan.
All right, so?
So then, and we'll be in the taxation column.
Okay. So there's some potential savings there?
Correct.
In terms of taxation?
Just to go back real quick to the last discussion, so I'm looking at the fiscal year 18 total column, and the fiscal year 19 total column, and yes, I'm coming up with the difference, but if you compare the numbers, fiscal year 18 total to fiscal year 19 total, there is no difference other than the $3,500. You see a $3,500 increase, but if you compare each line to each line, everything else is exactly the same.
Because it's a level funded budget.
But so how does it equal $5,750?
Can we finish with the loans? And then, then can we?
But if this is all off, it doesn't even matter.
But we are jumping back and forth, I would prefer to, I absolutely agree, but let's, and I promise you, I'm almost done with the loans, and then we'll go, we can go to this. So, so Smith, and then the last one would be the Horse Mountain land purchase?
And that was a grant as well.
And that was a grant too, so there's potential?
And we also, CPC contributed $40,000 to that, and then Kestrel Trust contributed $29,000.
Okay.
So we could apply those monies too.
Those could be applied.
Right.
So hopefully in the next few days, once you guys, Edwina, you kind of get a handle on, on that, there's some potential savings from taxation.
Re-classifying the loans.
Yeah.
So, may I ask a question, Edwina? So, so we'll have, in a few days, now that we've come across this, we'll have a better idea what amounts, we won't have to necessarily pay out a taxation, but, and it'll be, the loans will be reclassified correctly as a grant loan, if in fact that's what, if it was a grant. My question is, however, when will that all take place, so not until July 1st?
Not until the?
Or, because I heard you say something about when the loans due, so?
When the loan is due, and a lot of our loans are due July 1st.
Right, so, so that's my question, Darrell, is, I mean, we know?
Yeah.
It's going to be one of those, we know it's going to happen, but, you know, we've got to still, I think, have the level funded budget going into the town meeting, right?
So, so we can?
When do we reap the benefit, is I guess what I'm asking.
Yeah, that's right, because, do we have to wait, you know, because if we have to wait till July, this is a great discussion, it'll save, save us some money, but as far as going to a budget to town floor, we can't change any of this.
Those changes, my understanding, have to go to DOR, to review and approve before they're actually changed.
Do you think that if we make the case of we know that this is, what, the grant wasn't appropriated or wasn't requested, or?
Yeah.
Can we do that in advance of town meeting, you think? And they'll say, okay, then consider, you don't have to take that, you know, against your levy limit? Not that you can speak for them, but I mean, is it something we can at least try to say?
We have to provide them with all the information, and if the article was written correctly for the town meeting?
Yep.
They, that's what we have to provide them with, that information, and anything else they need to know about the grant itself.
Right.
And then, if, I would ask Margaret to take a look at it, and she could tell me when the turnaround would be for that approval.
So they could basically, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You can't change it? You can't change it.
Right, understood.
Until it's due.
But if the anticipation is that we are going to correct it, perhaps, as we're moving forward with the budgets, Darryl?
Right.
For, you know, for whenever they'll, they'll say, okay, we realize what this is, and they'll not have to maybe put it towards,
Right.
towards our budget that we present to town meeting. Right, am I saying that correctly? I just, okay.
Right, and I, I guess that's my question. Can we get it done before town meeting so that we can apply it?
The approval.
Yeah.
From the state, but not, but not necessarily changing the, the loans themselves until they come due.
Right.
But if they know it's on the horizon.
We get the approval from the state to do it, then we should be okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's quite a bit of.
To change the budget, because, you know, I mean, rough calculations, there's, I don't know, there's sixty-six thousand, another ten thousand, that's seventy-seven.
And another ten?
Another ten is eighty-seven. Eighteen gets us a hundred and five. So there's a potential hundred and five thousand savings that brings our number from two ninety-three to one ninety-three, which I'm sure a lot of departments will breathe just a little bit easier, including us.
Currently, the budget reflects ambulance revenues funding the operating costs. And talking with Derek today, we have about forty-five thousand available.
Right. And we, and, okay, and we can't do that in anticipation of revenue coming in for the next three months?
This is through March, right?
Right, the forty-five thousand is through March, correct?
Right.
So if we were to bring in an additional thirty thousand, month of, of April.
April, May, and June.
We could do that. Um, you know, Derek.
We, we do anticipation revenue numbers on, on excise and things like that? Is this not?
The problem is that we have been funding this in anticipation of having the money, and that's not the correct way to do it.
Oh, oh.
So the other, the other thought is, you know, do you fund approximately, you know, forty thousand from ambulance revenue and, or just fund forty thousand of their operating costs, and that at a later town meeting, we fund the remainder of their budget when free cash is certified? Because there was money actually that was, from ambulance, that was closed out at the end of the year, went to the general fund, and should have gone to ambulance, the ambulance trust.
Forty thousand dollars worth of money.
The ambulance fund. And so, you know, the fire chiefs would like to see some money returned.
So we just have to figure out the correct procedure to do this, to do it right?
We can't, we'd be over appropriating.
But so, just so I'm clear, so there's forty thousand dollars that went to the general fund that should have remained in the ambulance?
No, there's forty thousand right now avail, forty-five thousand available.
The answer is both.
Well, that, to answer your question, did forty thousand, it may be greater than forty thousand.
So there's, there's two issues here, and, and so the first issue is that historically, for thirty years, the ambulance has been there, and the ambulance funds have, the ambulance has been self-sufficient. It's funded itself. Starting somewhere around fiscal fourteen or fifteen, I think fifteen, when the ambulance had excess revenue left in the account at the end of the year, it went from, instead of going back into the ambulance, it went into the general fund or into free cash. The sum that's done that since, I believe FY fifteen, is forty thousand dollars. If that forty thousand dollars had been in the ambulance fund where it belonged, because it truly is ambulance money, then the ambulance would actually be twenty thousand in the black even before the revenue this year. We would never have had a deficit. Now, what it sounds like is so that the ambulance went into last year, and was, was in a deficit, had it had, was underfunded. Basically, we funded it with money we didn't have, because we were in this problem. In the management of the ambulance last year, I managed to have twenty thousand dollars remaining in the account at the, in the, in the expense and salary line combined at, at the end of FY seventeen. Uh, that went to free cash, and, and obviously, we can't get that. So it's, it's forty thousand dollars, it's including those twenty thousand dollars. Is it supposed to go to free cash, or is it supposed to go to ambulance revenue? Well. It's always gone to ambulance revenue, and then it, it started going to free cash.
Right, but there should be an article on the warrant to do that.
There is, and, and I'll tell you what, I mean, this ambulance thing is very frustrating, because when we discussed our three hundred thousand dollars at the special town meeting, the ambulance was discussed in it numerous times, until I went to the town meeting, and then it didn't, this problem didn't get addressed. We can fund an ambulance with forty thousand dollars and hope for a special town meeting, but I, I'll be honest with you, as a department head, I sat and was told I'd have a special town meeting about a year ago, maybe less, maybe six months ago, and we didn't have it. The ambulance is not actually, the ambulance actually needs seventy-nine thousand dollars this year, not sixty-nine thousand dollars. Because when we approved the, the lease, and the, to purchase paramedic equipment, years two, three, and four haven't made it to any budget figures. I spoke into Capital. They were very nice to take me and talk with me about it. There's not free cash, so the only other places I went expressed to Marlene in, in a plan a couple of weeks ago, is that I can, we can try to eat that in, through the ambulance revenue. The ambulance is at a banner year. It's never made seventy thousand dollars. It might make a hundred thousand dollars this year. This is how it should operate. Um, I, I'm really, I, I really would love to know how we didn't deal with this on the, on the special town meeting, because we knew we had this problem then. And, and I don't know who decided to drop it off, um, but it, it's frustrating, because now I'm looking at, a thirty thousand dollar cut to the ambulance is, is significant. There's things I can't cut, and there's things I can, and, and that's something that, that obviously, I'm going to take direction from the finance and the select board on. But we can only correct that, Stephen, if, either by taxation or by free cash.
I, I understand. I'm just frustrated we got to this point. That's, I really want to say.
I understand, but I, I'm just thinking about the fix. If we had free cash, we can, obviously, we can correct it with free cash, or if we have excess levy capacity, we can do it out of taxation. Right? But we certainly need to make a note, because it's nice to have, you know, because the ambulance is revenue generating and paying for itself, so we certainly do not want to penalize, um, the ambulance for this, so.
Of course.
It should be corrected.
And to answer the chief's question, why this wasn't addressed back in January, my understanding, Derek, correct me if I'm wrong, is that D O R wasn't going to, to hold us to that at that time?
They didn't hold us to it last year. So, so essentially, just to, Darryl, your, your question on, on we accrue the, the motor vehicle excise and, and real estate property.
Yeah.
That comes under the sixty-day rule, that the director of accounts allows us to take that money that was committed in the previous year, and we can take those revenues that we received in July and August and actually count it in the previous year. When we fund the ambulance fund, when we, when we move that money into the operating budget, it's a scheduled V two, and basically, it says, what was the amount of money in the fund when you made the appropriation? And all the past years, we've always appropriated more than we've had in the fund, and we knew we had to make up that, that difference. But going forward, they're, they're not going to allow us, last year, I think was the last year, they're going to allow us to kind of skip by on that.
But once we put the money back, the forty thousand or whatever it is, back into that, hopefully, in the next couple of years, we'll catch up, and there will be, we won't run into this problem again.
We'll start drawing a surplus, yes.
Yeah.
And, and I do have a, an email out to Justin, because there is, there is a proper way to do this, put the article on. One of my questions was, is because we're going to vote this in, in May and have an additional sixty days of operations, how do we get that number as close to, to what we want to back this surplus in there? So I do have a, a question to Justin, to make sure that going forward, see if you're taking care of, and make sure we put this on, on the town meeting, and that money does actually go back.
Okay.
Well, but what we don't know is if we're going to be in a position to put it on this town meeting.
Right. No, right.
Financially.
Yeah, without, without free cash or excess levy, right now, we can't, but.
So it would have to be on the special town meeting that we're hoping to have before June, mid-June.
Yeah, before the end of June.
Because, you know, the goal is that free cash, everything's going to be released.
I guess my only, my only hope at this point is that if, is that you, as, as the select board and finance, come up with a figure, and, and give me a figure, so, so I can, obviously, we need to take some steps on the best way to, to utilize that, that figure, and, and get by as long as we need to. And I don't, I, what I'm hoping is I don't want to obviously have a month to deal with it. I want, you know, as much time as I can to, to know.
Right.
What we're in a position we're going to be in. You know, I think that it's, it's important to relay that, that this is where we're at. You know, I think it's important for people to know, if I have to cut services, we cut services, but it, it is what it is, you know, and, and, but I think we should really look hard at, at our options here.
Right, agreed.
But we don't have a lot of options.
Not, no, and I understand that, and I'm not, yeah, that's, that's my, my point. Okay, can we, to, to Sean's point, maybe what we should do is go through, start, start with line one and.
Well, let me just point out a couple of things, though, first.
Yeah, you go right ahead.
Yeah, so, so let's go back to the, um, public safety part, lines thirty-five to forty-four. And, you know, I don't want to get stuck on this, but since I'm not, you know, doing this every day, a spreadsheet's pretty important to me. So if you look at the FY eighteen total, says five thousand, or five hundred and eighty thousand four hundred and thirteen. That's not accurate. It's actually five hundred and eighty-two thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars. And, and so that actually changes a lot. If you do the math, then that ma, makes the change five seven seven eight. Um, I know you have five seven five zero, which I don't understand. I mean, maybe it's rounding, although that doesn't really make sense to me either. So it seems like there might be lots of little parts that are off. Um, let's see, if you look at fiscal year eighteen expense, and maybe I'm just not understanding this right, but if you look all the way down the expense line, all of the numbers are exactly the same as the fiscal year nineteen expense, yet there's a thousand dollar difference in the total. So I'm just not quite.
Where are you at now?
So if you look at FY eighteen expense from thirty-five to forty-four, and you compare that to fiscal year nineteen.
Which line are you on?
Lines thirty-five to forty-four.
Thirty-five to forty-four.
Oh, so you're up further?
Yep. So you look at fiscal year.
Starts with police department, starts with, yeah, there you go.
Yep.
Oh, okay, when you say the numbers, you're talking about this column right here. Okay, okay.
So column, so lines thirty-five through.
Thirty-five, okay, but the formulas read the, the numbers in the far left column, so that's why I asked.
That's all right, so Sean's talking about that section, which is thirty-five through forty-four. There you go.
Yeah, so the expense line, so am I missing something? Like, shouldn't that equal out?
Expense.
The expense is one twenty-nine oh fifty-eight, but the expense in nineteen is one thirty oh fifty-eight.
Now, I see the difference. You have a different number in your spreadsheet than we have in ours, I think. Oh, no, you don't, no, that's not it.
But there's no difference above.
So all the numbers are the same, right? Am I missing something?
Five five oh six, thirty-six, yes.
Well, I, I, you know, we'll certainly go back and, and check those fiscal year eighteen. So what we're doing, when we set up the fiscal year eighteen, we're just, you know, copying and pasting those numbers. There aren't really formulas here, as you see in these columns here, with the exception of the total. When you get into the formulas, they're over here under the recommended.
I mean, I'm going to, you know, let it go, because I don't know what to do at this point, but I've got to say, it's tough to have a conversation about numbers if the numbers that we're actually looking at are inaccurate.
And I will, I will check them, I'll be glad to do that.
That's all I got there.
Are, are there other lines? Is, I can only guess.
I just did the school, because it's really small.
Yep.
It looks to me like, like the outside numbers line up, like what's coming out. See, I'm not sure where the end results are being drawn from here, because I, well, it comes by the last time, but like, where it says what's, and this is an easy one, because it's all under taxation too. So if you look at, if you look at taxi, I'm looking at lines forty-five, forty-six, and forty-seven.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
So like, it, it looks like everything adds up around this change column, like the, the, but, but ninety-nine, one-one-three, and seventy-two, seven-thirty-two is definitely not two oh three six seventy-one.
Right, because that's the difference, the two oh three six seventy-one is the difference between the fiscal year eighteen and the projected nineteen. Again, that's the change column that you're talking about.
Right.
Right, and we were talking about that earlier, yeah.
Right, and the other part does, it's, it seems to add up, the four million six twenty-five, six eighty-five, and the four million.
No, it doesn't.
Oh, no.
The lines forty-five to forty-seven, your fiscal year eighteen, um, is a twenty-five thousand dollar difference.
Yeah, that doesn't add up, but if you go across, it does. So I don't understand how you're getting to the total.
Yeah.
How do you get to the four, six, four million six twenty-five, six eighty-five, and the four million eight twenty-nine, three fifty-six?
I guess we're kind of being asked to take the totals without any explanation of where the numbers are.
So what.
Unless it's coming from somewhere else, it's pulling from somewhere else.
I, I can suggest that maybe the difference is, because the money that they had given up at the special town meeting in January was put back in there, and so I will go back, that may be the difference that's not included in the total.
Thirty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, that might be, that could be it.
Okay.
That could be it. All right, thank you. We just got to fix it.
And, and, and absolutely, absolutely, and, you know, as I said, there's so many components to this, and, you know, you, you have to double check.
Well, you have to know where it's drawing everything from, yeah.
So it's possible that.
What was the formula there, if you?
This formula right here, Sean?
Look underneath that, yeah.
In F sixty, there isn't a formula there.
Oh, it's just a number.
So that's why.
Okay, yep.
These, these three columns, if you see, eighteen.
Just numbers.
The salary, expense, and the total do not have formulas.
They could, and they probably should, right?
They could, absolutely.
Because if one number was changed, and no one thought to change the bottom, we'd never know, you know?
At some point, someone should go through and make sure all the formulas.
When this was, when this was set up, when Terry Williams set this up, these columns did not have formulas.
Right.
Because you're just copying and pasting what.
Because you're copying and pasting, you're just pasting those numbers in there, right.
What was approved at the last town meeting.
And that, and that's fine. I think just what we should do is probably copy and paste into the, into the lines, and then have the total sum up. Just, if that's, because you're not always going to be copying and pasting every time. I mean, there could be changes. Especially in the nineteen, in the eighteen column, yeah.
So that might be exactly what, what happened, yeah?
Yeah.
And it was, because initially, the fiscal year eighteen was reduced by the amounts that the departments gave up. I went back and put it in there, um, and then on that summary page, under special town meeting.
You put it under there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Because that just confused, that was more confusing for the, the change column. It looked like there was more money that departments were requesting.
Okay. So, so I guess the question is, where do we go from here? Because if we're two hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars over the levy limit, we have to start having some serious conversations about, about that. Now, there's a possibility that we can be about a hundred thousand dollars better if D O R lets us change the loans. So we, we could drop that number to a hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred and eighty, and then start thinking, what are we going to do to make up that difference? We did, we did increase some, so, oh. Town clerk. We, we increased her elections budget.
That's right.
And now the state has a, Marlene, you, you can talk about it better than I am. They, they'll reimburse.
The state is, is reimbursing municipalities for, for the cost of that early voting.
Yes.
Early voting. So that money will come in and go into a special fund, and you can use that money for costs associated with, you know, expenses that you incur for early voting.
So we can reduce, we could probably safely, can we safely just level fund her?
And I think they said they would send it thirty days before.
Thirty days prior, so.
And the town has already received it for last year, or the previous, we did receive, um, I don't know, Derek or, or Edwina may be able to speak to that.
So this would be line twenty-one, and twenty-two, and twenty-three, or, oh, election and registration. Which. Yeah, I used her so bad.
So she's requesting seventy-six hundred and thirty-eight dollars for nineteen.
So the question is, can we go back and reduce that to the thirty-four fifty-two from eighteen? In anticipation that she will be covered for that. I mean, it's not, we're not talking big dollars, but it's something.
So we need to have that conversation with her, and she's also increasing her expenses as well.
Right, so can you check with Lydia and see what, because we don't want to short her, but there is some money there.
May I ask a question?
Oh, you can ask a million. Oh, you can ask a million.
Getting like Sean, getting my calc, getting my phone out to do the calculator. And I'm sure this is something obvious, and it's right in front of me, but if you look at the very first page of this spreadsheet.
Yeah.
You know?
Budget.
The budget, the very first one, Marlene. So I'm looking at fiscal year eighteen, all the way down, third column in, all the way down eight-sixty-four, nine-eleven, for all those departments, right?
Yeah.
Then I'm looking all the way over to the change fiscal year eighteen to nineteen, right in the middle of the page.
Yeah.
One-twenty-four, thirty-eight.
Okay, one-twenty-four, thirty-eight.
Yep.
But if you add the numbers above it, it doesn't come anywhere near a hundred-and-twenty thousand, it's like sixty. So what, what's driving that? Because I just looked, I don't think any of these departments gave, you know, the schools had given thirty-two thousand back at that special town meeting. And that's not part of this, so everything else was a few thousand here, a few hundred.
There could be other departments that goes back to, I think Marlene's got to, we've got to clean up that.
Yeah, but as I look quickly to the left, it just seemed, I, you know, again, I.
Yeah, you're right.
I just, I, yeah.
Our takeaway was that the totals are not the totals.
Yeah.
So the line items, we assume, are correct, and perhaps add and subtract up properly for the change eighteen, nineteen, but the totals, I would say.
Okay, so, so are, are we saying that that hundred, so we need to do the math in that column to show what the real, it's not really a hundred-and-twenty thousand, it's whatever the real number is, which is going to be about sixty thousand, which just saved us sixty thousand dollars? Go ahead, Chris.
Okay, I think the simple answer is, I tested this on several parts. So you take FY nineteen recommended.
Yeah.
Minus FY eighteen actual, and that's your number, one-twenty right there.
So, so it's formulating the recommended, not the level funded?
So that cell is essentially, if you took the formula.
Yeah.
Is taking the alternate cells I just told you.
Yeah.
It does not take the add going down.
You need another line.
Right.
Which is what Marlene explained, it's, it's subtracting one from the other in that line itself, but the ones above it, you need to have a total line above. It says total for the column.
Right, so if we're gonna get, I don't know that this is the time right now, it's so close to town meeting to rewrite this, um, because I just need to make sure that it doesn't have an impact on other parts of this workbook.
I don't disagree with you, I'm just pointing out that that's gonna, if that's gonna help everybody in the future, is that that's where you're making these changes, and you need an extra total line that shows that column, and then just the other line at the bottom.
I always thought we had. It doesn't seem to have been this confusing in the past.
All right, so in column M, the change column, a hundred-and-twenty thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-eight, is the difference between the requested and, and the previous, or the current fiscal year? What number do you get, Brian? Because I just did the math, and I'm getting a hundred-and-twenty thousand, four-thirty-eight.
It is, as long as you don't add the stuff in the change column, then it works out.
Yeah.
If you add the stuff in the change column, you're all over the place.
We're trying to level.
So, right, I know, so, yes, that change column does not add up.
Going up a hundred-and-twenty right there, but it's not.
Right, so you're, you're, you're reading this at the change column is adding up to a hundred-and-twenty thousand, four-thirty-eight. Right, but it doesn't, that's not how it's formatted.
Okay.
It's formatted to, to, from the left to the right.
But the, I mean, the column that you're.
So what column should we be looking at for a bottom line?
Well, what, what do you want to look at?
We literally, you have to add.
Between fiscal year eighteen and what we're proposing for fiscal year nineteen for these thirty-four lines.
Yep.
What's, what's the difference?
So the total, the column M, at the bottom of each section. So if we go all the way down to the end of column M.
This one's fifty-six, one-oh-three.
The total change.
For what's there.
The total change is seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-three dollars. That's the total change between fiscal year eighteen and nineteen.
I, I think, I, I get it, Marlene, I, I guess I was trying to make it, you know how even at town meeting, we go section by section, we say, okay, Joe says page one, page two, and then it's whatever.
Right, this is the same budget we've used for years.
Yeah, it is, but this problem's been happening.
Really?
Yeah, if you take, because if you, if you take FY nineteen total right now, Finance Committee Recommended Budget FY nineteen total, and you subtract from it the FY eighteen total.
Right.
You do get the right, you do get one-twenty-four, thirty-eight.
Right.
It, it's just the rest of it that's not accurate.
Yeah.
And I, I haven't added up the actual column to see if ninety-five, three-forty-nine, or eight-sixty-four, nine-eleven is correct, though. Which, you might want to know.
Yeah, which I'm doing, I mean, yeah, literally, we gotta try to make sure all these numbers are right.
Because, yeah, I don't know that that's correct. If I had to hang, she'd be like.
Sure.
So I would propose, I mean, so are we looking at, or considering a cut to DPW? Um, because, you know, that's one of our largest departments, and we've got to save a lot of money. I don't know where folks feel about, how folks feel about that.
I think we need to know what the amount of money is we're dealing with first off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that seems to be where we're having the conversation of what is really, so do we truly have?
I would like.
I think the answer's no.
No.
Do we truly have what, what the amount of money is for the, the budget and where we stand? I mean, we've got some questions coming back from, I know we have to move forward and have some discussion on these things. But I, you know, I don't know what the best course, the best way forward right now is, I mean. And by that, I'm talking the, the numbers thing, you know, on this.
Oh, yeah.
Not the, not the total amount, but just how we got to different places with the amounts of money.
Well, and we don't really even know the totals for sure. I mean, we're just assuming that the numbers they put there are right, but it doesn't, doesn't actually have formula, she said, so really, someone just, you know, calculated it like you.
I'd be glad to send this to you, and if you want to go through it and pick it apart.
Well, I mean, I'd go through it and put a formula, and, but.
So what, so maybe what we should do is go over some of the.
But I don't think we're gonna, I don't, that's just fixing eighteen or whatever, that's not.
Right, that doesn't really have an effect on the.
That's not really gonna help us.
Right.
That's only, right, I mean, what we really need to be looking at is this nineteen, what we recommended.
Yeah.
And, you know, I mean, because we did recommend some increases in that, we recommended, and, you know, we talked about, uh, Town Clerk, so we're gonna look into that. The school, we, we gave them an increase, um, and they, they, you know, of course, came back very nicely and cut that back a little bit. Um, we increased, um, Marlene, the town administrator, no.
The expense, well, the last meeting, we increased it to a hundred thousand, up to, we put it, the expense at a hundred thousand, since then, I reduced it to seventy.
To seventy, and that was because we have to be able to.
Financial services.
Pay Justin for next year, and we still haven't figured out, we still have to pay him thirty thousand dollars for fiscal year eighteen, and we have not found that money yet, either.
Do you think it's, you know, do you think it's wise to take this five-page budget and just put it down for a second and go through these individual sheets, like local receipts, and see if the numbers are accurate there? Or no, is that? I mean, is any of that able to be tweaked a little bit to put us in a little bit better position before we go back to the, the overall budget itself, or? Because there's local, local receipts.
Those state charges, Justin had recommended, I had a conversation with Daryl about this.
Yeah.
To have some excess levy capacity, so we added fifty thousand, that's right there, for nineteen.
We did, we did add that, to make.
It's a hundred and three, well, it's a hundred and two, I, a hundred and two, what was it?
Yeah.
Derek, it was a hundred and two thousand something, I just rounded to a hundred and three, the snow and ice.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, that number, you know, the, the one-point-five million did increase since we met a couple of weeks ago. Um, nothing has changed with state revenues yet, that's still the same.
I mean, is there, just as someone who hasn't done this in a little while, is there some suggestion as to why we need to be fifty thousand dollars unappropriated? I mean, that's way more than we ever did.
Yeah.
Like, by a factor of ten.
Our, 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 our meeting with DOR.
No, oh, no, I understand they're the ones who are saying it, I just, is there a reason why they're saying it, I guess is the question.
Because the last two years, because we didn't have enough, any levy capacity, when, when fall came around and they were figuring the, it's not the cherry sheet, but, you know.
The what?
Tax recap.
Tax recap. We, that's when we fell into deficit, and so leaving at least fifty thousand dollars gives us a little wiggle room for that.
Was that because we overestimated receipts, or because we just didn't have numbers that were, we didn't have free cash?
Well, no.
Huh?
Yeah, yes and yes, and then, of course.
We never handled that correctly.
And then, of course, last year, the snow and ice was the problem.
Oh, yeah, right, okay.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm just thinking about it in terms of, like, if you know what some of the mistakes are, and you correct them.
They're holding us to the fire on this one.
Right. And I certainly think we can have the discussion, if it, if it comes down and we, we figure it out, and instead of fifty thousand, it needs to be thirty thousand, well.
Right, I mean, I'm just thinking about it in terms of, like, you're not gonna not fund snow and ice deficit again.
Right, 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 right.
Figure that out, right?
No, we've got that, we've got that figured out, that we know snow and ice is in there correctly, right?
That's the, the hundred and three?
Yeah.
That's the current deficit.
Yeah, I'm always saying it, because like fifty thousand is a lot of just-in-cakes.
I agree.
When you're three hundred thousand dollars over the levy limit, you know what I mean, you're gonna.
I, I.
Or maybe a hundred and fifty, depending on how you.
Right.
Well, but for us, not necessarily, I mean, we're trying to find thirty thousand dollars right now, you know?
I mean, so.
For us, I mean, it might be smarter to do.
Well, and, yeah.
Daryl, just a question here, the two ninety-three doesn't include the fifty, right? The levy limit?
Oh, yeah.
If you want to be younger?
Yeah, well, it's in the sheet.
The two ninety-three does include the fifty.
Yeah.
Oh, it does?
Sure.
I got a question on line nine, on five, on cable, isn't that money that we get in?
It is, and that's coming from.
And it comes from, from cable.
Right, it's not coming from taxes.
She's got, if you go over the H, HCTV Enterprise Fund, that is funded from that enterprise fund.
So it's not part of the total?
Coming from thirty-two to eighty-seven.
What's that?
Look at line five.
Recommended, right, the nine-eight-five?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I was just.
Right, but it's all funded, none of it is funded from taxation.
Right, if you look at the column, the funding source columns, the entire budget, eighty-seven thousand, nine-fifty-seven is coming from that enterprise.
That was new equipment John had talked about, getting the updated.
So, 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 yeah, so we're, we're okay with that.
Right, the only question is whether you're appropriating it or not, it's not gonna come back to you if you don't spend it, so.
Right.
It's in an enterprise fund.
Yeah.
It's been building the past couple of years.
Right, yeah.
Another question that perhaps we've spoken about before, but on one-twenty-one through one-twenty-four, those are designated as debt exclusions. But they're listed under taxation, is that?
They have to be.
They're offset in the levy.
They're offset.
They're offset on the levy as well, you have to include them in your operating budget, and then the levy cap, levy limit calculation is entirely separate, and you include that.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's, it's a good question. And then, we did, I think Marlene spoke with Phil, is Phil still here? About whether we could move some of the loans into the, you know, from taxation and into. Retained earnings from water and sewer, but it looks like we don't have enough money to do that.
Well, there, there is some money available, but it was certified for fiscal year eighteen. It would have to be certified again for nineteen before we can use it.
Before we can use it.
Right, so that's, that's part when we submit free cash, it's part of the free cash certification.
That's part of the free cash certification, so, so perhaps next year, we, we would have that option, but this year, we don't have that option. Correct, Phil?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do we have an update as to when free cash?
If free cash was certified before town meeting, we could use it for town meeting.
Yeah, but that's not gonna happen, right?
Well, I.
I mean, we're getting, I know we're getting closer, I know Derek, Derek has been very, you know, responsive, I, I, what, maybe another week or two, and hopefully, will the unapplied revenue will be pretty close to being.
Right.
Closed out, is that fair, Derek?
That's, that's, I'm, I am shooting to by Friday, but until Tuesday, to wrap up the next six months. We've got, um, it looks like we've got two heavy months that I'm gonna have to journalize, those are highly complicated, much like this spreadsheet, there's a lot of moving parts. And then there's the four months that are kind of small, Phil crank goes out, and then Justin wants to take a look at them by quarter. So my, my plan is to get, um, the third quarter done tomorrow, early Wednesday, up to Justin, and then finish the, the fourth quarter to the other end of the week.
Okay, and, and if you could just explain, and then, so once that's finished, Derek, then what's the next?
Okay.
You know, right.
This checks out for me.
Just need a couple of days to.
This is off for me.
Scheduling, yeah, and then. Sorry. Yeah, the auditor's gotta come in, right?
Right.
And what do they need, a couple of weeks?
DOR wants to see a draft copy of the audit before they certify free cash, so I mean, it is tight, there is, yeah.
We're, we're kind of hoping maybe by May one, we can get the auditors in?
And have we given them the heads up?
Yes, I communicated with Tony last week.
Yeah, well, and Marlene reached out to DOR about where we are with schedule A, which is good.
So, so the good news is, I believe, is while we might not have, I think by town meeting on May eighth, we will be in a position to talk to the free cash amount, even though we may not have it, potentially.
Right.
But we might not have gone through and, and, you know, had the opportunity to, to allocate it.
Right.
But we will need to do that before mid-June.
Right.
To spend that, or allocate the free cash from twenty-seventeen, correct?
I heard it June thirtieth, and then it, we go through the certification.
Then you gotta go through the process.
So that raises the question to me, do you, if, if, if we're on track for that, do we, I don't say delay town meeting, but can we continue town meeting so we don't really have to put a budget together until the middle of June, which gives us time to, I don't know the legalities of that, but, but it would.
You could do everything except the, the budget part.
The budget, is that what you're saying, the upper budget?
If, if the town moderator is.
Right.
Up for that, I mean, it, you know, a total, I think it makes total sense if we're able to do something like that, Daryl. Because it, you know, it shifts, it's early May, if it were a couple of weeks later, we'd probably have everything ready to roll.
Well, do you do a town meeting together?
We can call it, whatever.
Right, yeah.
I didn't hear you.
Yeah, well, I, I think there's.
Delaying a town meeting, if we can do that, you know what I mean, by a couple of weeks.
You'd still do it once.
But there's a way to, I think there's a way to continue it.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
There's a way to continue it.
You're spending the money once, you go to the town meeting, and then you want to do the budget a second time, now you're spending money twice.
Right.
That we don't have, that's not worth it.
Right, but.
I mean, and, can I ask a question, because we're talking free cash, and this is more for even townspeople too, that are watching, I mean, I understand this, because I don't write the second. If we get free cash, like we're talking about, that this gets cert, we get through all this part, and we get the dollars, is this gonna take care of this, the levy problem?
No.
No?
No, okay, that's what I was trying to, I just wanted to put my tux in a row.
I mean.
I mean, it'll take care of some other stuff, it gives you.
It gives us options.
Right, it gives you options, but it doesn't fix the problem overall.
No.
I didn't think it did, but I just wanted to ask the question.
Shouldn't it really just go to capital-type expenses? Or we'll get ourselves in trouble a year?
I think we can get in.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to start another conversation.
No, I, I guess, but, but coming back to the town meeting, which is currently scheduled for May eighth, you know, if we're planning on having the auditor, if, if everything just stays on track right now, the auditor that first week of May, maybe a little sooner if possible. You know, if we're planning on having the auditor, if, if everything just stays on track right now, the auditor that first week of May, maybe a little sooner if possible. And they take, you know, if they need a couple of we, I don't know what they need, but they need a couple of weeks.
They need a draft copy and above all else, we need DOR to be okay with this.
Right, so.
So, we need, need Deb Wagner and.
Yep.
The auditors had just said, just let us know and they will adjust their schedule to get in here.
Which is, which is nice of them and we appreciate it, I, I mean, continues that people are really trying to help us succeed. I, I don't know at what point we're gonna, are we probably meeting next week anyways? Unless you think you're getting through it tonight, the reason I'm saying that, Daryl, is, you know, we can have the conversation about.
I don't even.
Town meeting, you know, next week or a week after or something, but.
Well.
So, who do we talk about legally about opening up and then continuing to June?
Or just flat out postponing?
They've, they've, they've postponed it before, they've continued it before.
You have continued town meeting before.
And if everybody knew we were gonna continue, would anybody show up?
If we advertise.
You go, you go drag.
If you wanna vote on all the other stuff, you would.
Yeah. Of course, there won't be any financial items, 'cause we don't have any money.
Which is usually.
There wouldn't be much.
Which is usually the stuff people wanna vote on, by all, I mean.
All right.
I mean.
Mar-a-Lago Live Walls coming up, so there'll be people there for that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I guess for me, the question is. I, I'm not, I don't feel comfortable starting tonight, but at some point, we have to decide what kinda deficit. We potentially have and start having that hard conversation about where we're gonna cut, but. I would rather hear back where we make out on the loans and, you know.
So, right now, what percentage do you say we're over?
You're talking about a huge difference. I mean, you're talking about, you're talking about the difference between a hundred and fifty and three hundred thousand?
That's huge.
That's enormous.
Right, right, so even having, I don't even wanna have the conversation about.
Yeah.
You know, and so, let's figure out.
That's a couple of positions.
Oh, yeah.
Several hard decisions.
Yeah.
Although, I think, yeah, I agree, I think at the end of the day, it's safe to say we should probably be cutting two hundred thousand dollars. Because again, we don't have things in order enough yet to say that everything is gonna be right, we don't know how much we're gonna be paying Justin next year, for example.
We do.
Well, if nothing else happens, I mean, if no, if we don't have to bring in extra help like we did this year all the time and.
Well, yeah, I mean, he's given it, the contract that the selectmen signed was for, I believe, sixty thousand dollars.
For next year, yes.
For next year, for services and so.
Covers anything that we need from them? Or just certain things?
Well, as the contract was laid out, if something changes and it's.
Yeah.
Extra cost, extra, if, you know, we have to do something. I, we don't anticipate that, but we, we didn't anticipate what we're in the midst of now, right?
Right.
Not even close.
Right, yeah, and as far as, and I agree, we, you know, and I feel pretty strongly that we have to leave some levy capacity. And maybe fifty thousand dollars isn't the right number, but we gotta leave something somewhere for a rainy day. Because we always seem to have a rainy day that we, we don't, I, we don't figure out in the spring, we find it in the fall.
Right.
Special town meeting.
Yeah, and nobody wants another special town meeting.
So, right now, you're looking at what, a possible three percent cut overall, right? You figure seven million, figure a couple hundred thousand.
Well, and, and we can talk about a cou- couple of big things, like.
Well, except for half of it.
If we, if you go to line. Line ninety-two. Ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five.
Yeah. You can't touch it.
Huh?
You can't touch.
You can't touch it, but that's a huge increase.
Well, you can't touch it, Daryl, but when I.
I, I just wanna talk about it.
Yeah, when I was on the board of SLECK and I looked at, when I signed the warrant and stuff, there's a lot of, on the insurance part. We're paying for a lot of people that never worked for the town, their spouse did, but we're paying a big dollar amount for the people that didn't work for the town. Okay, because their spouse passed away or whatever, we're picking up, we're picking up that dollar figure on a lot of cases here, so.
But, but they're, they're.
Change town meeting that says that the spouse would be exempt from that, that, that's an option.
Well, yeah, well, what, what Daryl's referring to, just for people at home. Is the group health insurance increase from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen is one hundred and seven thousand dollars.
Right.
Which is huge.
The whole, the whole lot.
That's, that's, that one up twenty percent.
So, so, you know, just 'cause.
Yeah.
I've been involved in approving rates, so I know a little about what's going on here, so that also though. I mean, the reality of that is that, yeah, it's twenty percent this year, but all those years that we were sitting around saying.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Oh, gee, it didn't go up, oh, gee, it didn't go up.
Yeah, no.
It really was going up.
Yeah. It's not, it wasn't being passed on to.
It wasn't being passed on to us, it was being absorbed by the trust, spending its money to cover the cost. And so, you know, I mean, at some point, you have to pay that.
Right.
Uh, unless you're just gonna plan on continue spending the money to go out of business.
Right.
You know, and so, that's kinda what's happening now, is that's being rectified, which makes absolute sense.
Oh, gosh.
Unless you believe that, um, health insurance costs are gonna drastically decrease in some future year.
Yeah, no.
Yet to be named, which I don't think anyone thinks that's true, so, you know, you gotta, you can't spend all the, all the excess money in the trust while you, you know, wait for that to happen, 'cause this is gonna happen.
No, agreed, it, it, but the reality is for us, it, it's a twenty percent increase of a hundred thou, you know, couldn't have come at a worse time.
Yeah, so when you look at our statutory two and a half increase, we can increase the tax rate one hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars?
It's all in school, vocational school transportation insurance.
Yeah. Yep, two things that we have no.
Right.
No control over at all.
Certainly can't complain about based on our.
No, no, I'm not gonna, I'm not complaining about it, I'm just.
I think it's important to point.
Pointing it out for townspeople, so they understand that.
Yeah, it's not just money being spent on.
Right, yeah.
For things that aren't necessary, it's money being spent that we're obligated to have to pay in many cases and this is, you know.
Right.
That's a good example.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One issue with the health insurance was last year, the budget was not.
Oh, that's right.
It did, the budget wasn't set correctly, we're gonna have, we're gonna be short twenty thousand dollars this year.
Twenty thousand.
So, it looks like it's a bigger jump than it really is, the last year's budget was lower than it should have been and this year is right there.
So, we're making up twenty thousand from last year and then the eighty-seven, basically.
Twenty thousand is an addition.
Well, that's what, I mean, ma- yes, but twenties that we should've paid last year, or this, this year.
This year.
Yeah, that's what, but I, I'm just, I'm trying to break down the hundred and seven.
The increase of a hundred and seven is not.
The increase is eighty-seven and the twenty that we were under, that we were short.
Is the twenty in here?
No.
Yeah, see, the, the twenty is not in here, you cannot fix eighteen with nineteen money.
That's why it looks so different as a twenty percent increase.
I know, and.
You know, but the other people out there.
Right, because there was an increase last year that we didn't cover.
But, but my point being, at the end of this fiscal year, we are going to be twenty thousand dollars.
Sure.
Sure, we will have to make that up, we will have to hope that we have either money in finance reserve. Or we have money, you know, when we can swap money around at the end of the year, just like, you know, it's, um, anyway.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
If that makes sense.
It does, it's both.
We're gonna have to find twenty thousand somewhere.
Right. Well, and it's like, we're gonna have to find thirty thousand dollars for base date.
Which again, why I lean towards having a large levy limit left, at least fifty thousand dollars, because we don't know what we don't know.
But a large levy limit doesn't, we cannot take money off, off the levy at the end of the year in order to pay a bill.
Well, but if we had more space, couldn't we help hold a special town meeting?
Yes, that, that.
But it has a, but if you don't do it. It has the disadvantage of leaving the money on the table essentially.
Yeah.
'Cause are you gonna?
Right.
And that's when you get into some future year, you're gonna, you're gonna take it, right? And then everyone's gonna go, oh, well, that went up four and a half percent this year, because you took levy capacity that you didn't take in a prior year. So, it's gonna do the same essentially thing that we're talking about with the other trades, it's gonna cause this jump in potential levy. I mean, unless you think you're never gonna need it, but that doesn't seem likely either, so, you know, it's almost, I mean. I understand what DOR wants to do, but you'd almost be better off having it in finance reserve or something.
Yeah.
Not with that, but you wouldn't have to call a special town meeting to potentially use it.
Right.
But for that amount of money, you know, I mean, like for thirty thousand dollars or something. Uh, that seems like not a lot of money to have a special town meeting to.
I mean, the benefit could be you plan an end of the year special town meeting, when we have a better sense of where things are actually at. And move that to stabilization to begin addressing our stabilization issue, which, by the way, this year, we're not gonna end up touching at all unless.
As we get free cash.
Works out and.
Yeah.
Bob, did you have something you wanted to say or you all said?
Part of it was answered, that.
Okay.
We still haven't found the thirty thousand to pay Justin to get us until June thirtieth of this year, is the sixty for next year included in the two ninety-three?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Yes, it is.
Wanna make sure we're not actually talking.
Yeah.
No, three hundred and fifty.
No, no, the sixty is included and, you know, there, there, I mean, it's certainly, we have, it's a possibility, you know, at the end of the year. If, if we don't, but, you know, we could find the money at the end of the year when we're able to transfer money from within, within departments. The question is, do we wanna take that chance that we're gonna find it at that point?
Especially since we asked people to give back.
No.
What extra they had, so it makes it less likely that we'll find it, but.
Right. So, anyway. So, so going, so, so maybe we, let's schedule a meeting for next week. Do you think by next week, Edwina and Marlene, that we'll have some sort of reasonable answer on the loan thing? And, and then you were gonna check with, Marlene, you were gonna check with Jenny and the assessors?
Yes, I.
On that, um.
We're looking at new growth as well.
On new growth and see if there's some.
Right.
Capacity, if, if, 'cause, yeah.
Yeah, I'll talk to Lydia and, and just to mention, actually, I talked with Edwina last week, we reduced tax title by three thousand dollars.
Right.
Um, and then actually, talking to Derek today, um, his expense, 'cause he had money in there for consulting. And since there's money in consulting in the town administrator's expense, so I reduced, um.
Was that the seven thousand dollars that was pulled out? Didn't they see a negative seven thousand dollars in that?
Yes, mm-hmm.
Is that right?
That is correct.
You guys were nice enough to give me that seven thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And that money in the past few years has been used for the financial team, for whatever consulting services we need. My office or another office, but if you're gonna consolidate it one budget, I would say to leave it in, in Marlene's, so we can track it, it's not just spread across the budget.
Okay.
Phil, can you explain, uh, what, what would it look like if we cut sixty thousand dollars from the vehicle lease program?
You can.
Can't, because that's money owed.
Oh, so there's no way to, the, the only thing, Phil, that we could. That we could is if we decided not to take on a new lease this year. And that's twenty thousand or thirty thousand?
Thirty thousand.
So, there's a potential thirty thousand dollars there, but again, you know, and that's for two police cruisers. And a DPW pickup truck, is that a highway department, is that correct?
Yes.
But, we could look at it again with free cash at a special meeting if we needed to, you know, those are things, we put off a lot of other things this year, so it seems like those things.
Well, no, you wouldn't use free cash for that, you want it to be under the lease program.
No, you want it under the lease, but.
But you could still use free cash to fund it though.
Yeah. Yeah. You could. You could fund it.
You could fund the lease program through free, I like the lease program, huh? But you could fund that out of free cash.
Out of, out of free cash, that's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but then you would have to commit, at the.
Next year.
Years it comes out in half way.
Yeah.
You have to commit the first year out of free cash.
Yeah.
Yeah, then the rest.
Four additional years come out of the operating.
Uh, would come out of operating, correct. Yeah, and, and again, I think.
Should we be, should we be talking to department heads like right now? I mean, about some kinda scenario here? I mean, in fairness, like.
That's why someone showed up tonight.
Yeah, that's why I talked to some departments today.
So, so, we.
I agree, I think, yes.
So, do you ask them, so what, what, so, let's just, let's, let's just say that it's. Instead of two hundred and ninety-three thousand, it's a hundred and ninety-three thousand.
Okay, dude.
So, what kind of a, you know, who's quick with the calculator, what?
Well, it's gotta be more than quick with the calculator, 'cause you gotta figure out, there's a bunch of stuff you can, like you said, that you can't touch.
There's a bunch of stuff we can't touch, so.
I mean.
Would that be?
Kinda think about two or three percent, right?
Like a two percent cut?
Two percent cut?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, I guess that's, that's a fair scenario to.
I mean, at least it gives you time to evaluate what they come back with, you know what I mean, rather than, if you wait, you, you don't wind up doing it on your own.
I mean, one, one hand, if you do look at two percent and then free cash comes in, maybe have another meeting.
For a department head, you'd rather have a scenario and have it built.
Okay.
And, and be prepared for it, and then it doesn't happen, hey, that's great, but to start thinking at the last minute, it can be, it is, you know, I think we really have to think about our choices and. Show as much time as possible.
Do we, do you think two percent would get us below, would get us a hundred and ninety-three thousand?
It's hard to say, I mean, might as well.
Well.
What do you think, Marlene?
I would expect it would.
So, 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 if the board.
Well, three percent.
Board of, selectmen agree, let's, at, can we ask Marlene to send a letter to all depend, department heads to request them to submit a.
Two to three?
Revised.
A revised.
Two percent cut.
Yeah, I think.
Then we can go through and look at the rest if we have to, at least, at least a starting point.
Two percent is a starting point and it's gonna, it's a pretty significant hit to.
Amount of life in there.
To some, to a lot.
Well, that way, if it, if it turned out you only need one percent, you, you know, you could come back and say.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, that seems like a fairly substantial hit to the schools though.
Oh, yeah.
It is.
Well, they already cut their budget by eight thousand.
It's a big hit to all of us, so two percent for me is I'm losing my health agent.
Yeah.
Brian, did the school reduce their budget by eight thousand?
Yeah, but we increased it. Number eighty-six thousand.
But based on our dependence on school choice, that makes it a lot more complicated, you know, 'cause are, are we gonna end up shooting ourselves in the foot to save two percent? We end up affecting enrollment.
Did they already give some back?
Oh, right, 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 it wasn't.
Yeah, and they did, and they gave thirty thousand back last year and gave us some more back for this budget.
If you. They, they didn't give it back in the budget, we gave them an increase and then they, they, they decreased.
Yeah, that's what Daryl was talking about.
It was an eighty-six thousand dollar increase.
About, yeah.
Year, yeah.
That, for this year, and they reduced that very, very nicely, but.
Right here.
That, for this year, and they reduced that very, very nicely, but what we're asking for is a two percent from last year's budget.
Still prioritize what?
It, it gives us a, it, it gives everybody a fair, uh, an idea of what we're going through and gives us.
Plus, plus if you exclude half the budget, uh, then it's not two percent anymore.
I know.
Yeah.
It's more.
So they'll end up pulling more out probably from.
Choice money.
Layoffs.
Yeah.
They are spending a million dollars out of choice money.
Yeah, it's, it's, right.
And they're already laying off a teacher this year.
Probably gonna be layoffs for not just the school, it's gonna be other departments.
So, if we're gonna send a letter, uh, if we're gonna send a letter, I would recommend that the lettering just include a statement about. You know, thinking about what we can do to avoid that, because that really doesn't save us money short term.
No.
Yeah, cause then we have to increase the unemployment line.
And are you saying a two percent cut for next year? I mean, what are we talking this year? There's three months left of the fiscal year this year that you're saying.
We're okay.
Don't worry about this year.
We, we, no, we've, we fixed eighteen.
Eighteen's all set, so we're talking nineteen.
We haven't fixed it, cause we still haven't found the thirty thousand to finish paying Justin, so we.
Right, health insurance.
Completely found, fixed eighteen.
Or twenty thousand for health insurance.
Or twenty thousand, so we are in fact still fifty thousand short for FY eighteen that we haven't accounted for. So now you're asking everybody to take a hit in their budget that's only has about three and a half months realistically left of it. And then you want to take another two to three percent for next year.
Right now, we're not asking anybody to.
For fiscal year eighteen.
For, for eighteen, we're only asking nineteen.
I understand right now, but that is a realistic thing, it's out, right now, we are fifty thousand dollars short because we have these added expenses.
But, but there is money, there, there's money in finance reserve. There's always money at the end of the year when we, when, when we're able to move things around. I, I wouldn't say there's fifty thousand dollars, but we're, we're, we're usually able to find a good amount of money.
I think a better statement, Bob, would be there's fifty thousand dollars that we still have to cover, doesn't necessarily mean we're short fifty thousand dollars.
I, I guess, I guess my thing is now.
I get the point, but, you know.
Coming to these meetings now, off and on over the last four or five months, we seem to be hitting the markers of it's just getting to that bare minimum. And now we're in the situation that ultimately we're in. So, I, I understand that we need to cover those and we might have other funds. But we've, every, it sounds like every three or four days, we're coming up with something else that we don't have money to cover. Or we're gonna cover it sometime after basically July fifteenth, when the end of year budget is complete. And this is the part that needs to get out to the townspeople that can't come to the meetings. We are in a major financial problem and there needs to be a time when this group that's sitting up here ultimately needs to start telling people. No, you can't get your cruiser, you can't get your pickup, you can't get something because we have to fix the financial problem. We have less than fifty percent of our stabilization that we just took out in January and there is absolutely no plan in place to put any of that back. So, we need to start working as a town to try to fix this financial problem. Because all I'm hearing so far, it is a lot of good discussion, but we're talking about robbing Peter to pay Paul and we're gonna continue to be in a deficit. We have the known increases every year because of union and everything else, but we haven't accounted for all the rest of the increases and it comes a point. We're gonna have to start telling townspeople or telling departments, you get nothing. Like, that free cash needs to go back so we actually have money available. So that's my first point. My second point, just while I have everybody's attention. My nephew over here was doing some math in here, um, I think when we come back, you guys are coming back next week, these numbers don't add up.
Yeah.
In the columns, I, I, I think for everybody here and for the townspeople, when you hit that May fifteenth town meeting, if these are the numbers. People are gonna rip you guys apart up on stage. And we know the group of people that are gonna be looking at this budget, but we're, we're off. So, how can we set a budget when we don't have accurate figures? The num, the columns don't match, the numbers across the bottom don't match. I find that as a citizen, a major problem, that you, you're bringing a budget forward to try to talk about, that doesn't even add up.
It might be something you've been using for years, but it doesn't mean that it's been correct.
I mean, I, I, I can't follow this when numbers don't match, cause now you're not even talking realistic figures going across.
It does highlight the larger problem we have. You know, I mean, that's really the problem, is that we can't get things like this correct, reflected in a way that everyone reads spreadsheets, I should say. I'm not saying it's completely incorrect, but it's reflected in a way. The nineteen numbers are correct. But I think you agree that everything should be correct on, on this sheet, I, you know.
I guess my issue is that if the eighteen numbers are wrong, which they are. Now, when you look at the change to nineteen, when you take the left to right number, it's not an accurate number anymore. So, I agree, maybe some of the numbers are nineteen are okay, but that fiscal change from eighteen to nineteen are not correct when you don't have the right eighteen numbers.
Well, if in, if in fact, when this, when it gets reviewed, you know, that, that could lessen the difference between eighteen and nineteen. I mean, that, 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 that would certainly be a good thing, you know what I mean?
According to Quick Math, it goes the other way, there's a bigger change.
Well, don't look at it.
I wouldn't be, just so we know.
Well, right, it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't necessarily help us solve the problem, it's just.
No.
It just makes the numbers right.
We should understand what it is, what, what the difference is, yeah.
Yeah.
No, cause that's an important column, it is. It, it makes a statement about what are the choices we're making versus what are things that are just happening that we are not making any choices and they're just happening. And that's important to know, I think.
I mean, I feel comfortable putting off those additional, and I, we're gonna, I know this is gonna be a longer conversation, but those vehicle leases, those additional ones. Clearly, that's something that should probably wait, and you know, thirty thousand dollars at this point, especially if we have the option of being able to fund it. Through free cash, even though it will make next year a little bit more complicated, or we could not fund it at all, you know, I don't know the case. But let's, let's, let's let, you know, we, we, we're gonna send a letter, we can let Phil make that, you know. Sure. Make, make that choice, give the department heads, you know, the authority to cut where they see fit and let's, let's see what.
But at the same, at the same time, we gotta, we gotta do something with these spreadsheets, cause they're not, they're not good, they're, they're too confusing to everybody. So, we have to look at a better way to present information, so everybody has a clear understanding of it, so, I mean.
So, is there someone that can go through and, uh, create those sums, formulas, yeah?
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
They'll go through it.
Just having, I've worked on this before, and so you do have to be somewhat careful here.
Yeah.
Cause there is a bunch of stuff that happened.
Yeah, one sell-off or something.
Be, you don't wanna impact.
Previous.
The bottom line in a negative way, or a positive way, or in any way, that's inaccurate and that's just.
So, we're paying teams of professionals, so I hope they can figure that out.
Beats to that, you know.
Bottom line.
Drives to the front page.
Right. So Terry Williams looking at this might actually end up fixing a lot of the problems, I guess.
Terry Williams is the one that created this one.
Yeah, but he might also be the one, though, who catches a lot of the, cause I don't think, honestly, I don't think the form is the overall issue. And who knows when it started, formulas always get messed up, unfortunately, once you start passing them around. But, you know, maybe it's just the people, you know, looking at it, you know, maybe additional expertise.
Yeah, there was a conversation about this a long time ago, there's a reason, there was a reason why Terry didn't do some of these, some of these things. It had to do with how he was using it, I mean, this is.
Long time ago.
Years ago that we got this, so, yeah.
Formulas might not have existed.
They invented math.
So, may I ask a question, just to make sure I'm clear? So, back a few meetings ago, when we were looking at the over-under levy limit. And we thought we were under by roughly three hundred thousand dollars. And we started plugging it in to different, um, those funds into different things, I'm sure I have my notes.
Water, the water, phase two debt.
Yep, and then something for.
Plug that in.
Yep, the schools, um, the eighty-six, but call it seventy-eight, eighty for a round number. All of that has come out of this spreadsheet?
No.
No.
School number, we haven't, we, we didn't, we didn't pull the increase to the school out of this.
Yep.
Okay.
I, 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 I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that, I mean, I, not without all of us sitting down and talking about it.
Well, the, the reason I'm asking is what, so, and, and wherever else that money went is still plugged in as well, correct?
Yeah, we have, but.
So, so for some, for some departments, it's gonna be apparently, or not apparently, but it will be a larger than two percent cut. Because they've already, we sort of told them, because we thought we had the capacity, right? So, the, so if we're gonna cut two percent from the school, I'm just using the schools as an example, cause it's a, you know, large budget. And their budget's four million dollars, that's, uh, what, eighty thousand dollars, is that what two percent is?
Yeah.
Plus, their budget was created on that additional eighty thousand dollars. So, really, it's a hundred and sixty thousand dollar hit to the schools. To the bu, I, I, and other depart, whoever else was somebody that received some funds, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding it correctly.
Well, it depends on what we're asking, I guess, so, even in that, it was a question I kind of had too. So, and, you know, I mean, I haven't spent much time with this, but there are increases already built in here? Out of taxation.
So, we, we, we can go through, we can go through right now, do you wanna go through right now?
Cause it's, yeah, I think that's important, because I think the actual, actually kind of the opposite would be true. If you said to somebody, like, if now you say, okay, now we're gonna cut two percent. People who raise their budget two percent already are at an advantage, cause they're not actually gonna cut anything. They're just gonna go back to where they're zero, yeah.
Right. So, so line three, that's up thirty-one thousand. And that was, that, that, we raised that in order to pay for Justin for next year.
So, we're not gonna touch it.
Okay, then you go down, of course, the next big one, let's see.
Treasure, and that's for position.
Treasure collector, y- yeah.
Staffing, yeah.
That's, that's, that's for the full-time position and, and I think Marlene did check on that. And that is not with any kind of a increase per hour, correct, Marlene?
Correct.
So, that's, that's, okay. Then, we talked about the town clerk. Much of that is election stuff, and so there may be some potential savings there. So, we're talking eight, nine thousand dollars, right?
Yeah.
You go, inspection fees are up thirty-five hundred and that is because we got rid of the revolving fund. And we are running, running inspection through the budget. Okay, the school.
Terry, before you go, if you don't mind, I see where you get thirty thousand for Bay State, where'd you get the other thirty?
It was in, uh, in, we, we, we put money in the eighteen budget for Bay State. So, the thirty is just the increase over last year.
Oh, I see, so that's.
Over this, over this current year that we're using.
Right, alright.
So, the school budget, right now, that's seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. For the budget, Voke, we can't do anything about, the ninety-nine.
Correct.
Thousand, that's.
Is what it is.
That is what it is, but.
That may be reduced.
Yeah, there might be a soon.
I'll know later this week.
Okay.
Roughly seventeen or eighteen thousand, right, Marlene?
Um.
I think that's what he said, seventeen, yeah.
Then, then you've got.
Contracts.
Contracts going through. Um, and that gets us pretty much to the end of the budget, not, you know, then we go into loans.
Yeah, that's very certain.
So, I suppose if we took, for mass sake, so you got your calculator?
Yeah.
So, let's just go through and take seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars out of the school.
Seventy-two hundred what?
Seven hundred and thirty-two.
Which is the easy.
But just, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Let's just see where we, where we, where we land. Um, where else we, we, we take, and we're not taking from the treasure collector staff, cause.
Cause we need that, God knows it.
Need that to function. But, quick question on that, do we think that after this year, and I, cause I don't think this is the case, that we're gonna, the plan is that we won't need Justin after another year. That we're getting everything in order and we'll be able to do it. So, that's one more reason for us to think about that vehicle lease, cause, you know, that's sixty thousand dollars that we will have space for in the budget. And I don't think that should be included as far, as part of, um, Phil's two percent cut. It's thirty, so, yeah, so we even have more room in that way. And that shouldn't be part of the two percent cut to DPW, cause that ha, really has no effect on DPW, you know, for the whole town.
It's also DPW.
May, maybe the question is, if that was for two police cruisers, maybe they can get away with replacing one of them this year and one in the following year, right? You know, I don't know what the, or do they both have to be turned in, is part of the lease program, you have to, you know, you don't have to do that, right?
Have to turn them, keep them, buy them.
Maybe it's, yeah, you own it at the end, right?
But, but don't forget that the lease program is for town, every town vehicle, it's not a DPW's lease.
Yeah, that's what I mean, so it's not a cut.
I think the, the thing.
Clear, I mean, people have the impression that it's a DPW's.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, uh.
It's for eight, it's for eighty-seven vehicles within the town. Which is why it shouldn't be considered as part of your two percent cut.
I, I think that this, the lease, to, to put the lease off, we should really caution that. Remember, we, we, we had no free cash last year, we didn't make any capital, significant capital purposes last year. We need two police cars, we need an ambulance, we need some other equipment in this town. Every year we put this back, that we put it off, is one more year that we're going, falling behind. If you really look at our capital plan, what it was two years ago, what is this today, it's almost the same plan.
Right.
And every time these vehicles get older, the maintenance gets more, we get a greater chance of breakdown.
Alright, I just wanted to mention.
If we don't replace the ambulance, and the ambulance breaks, that's all we got. If we lose the frontline police car, then we, we go to the one that's maybe questionably reliable. You know, we're, we're making nine, I got a nine hundred dollar bill for a, a part for a fire truck right now, that's sitting there, cause it's an old truck. But we're gonna keep it going, the, the expenses, the maintenance is on these vehicles, and they'll tell you, it's astronomical, on what we've been seeing the last few years. Uh, through, through the last mechanic and the current one, it's, it's hard and, and, and yes, it's a good, it's a, it's a thought. But we keep putting our capital projects back and back and, you know.
We haven't had free cash.
No capital this year, we might be, and then, then where are we at? Another year behind, and, and our infrastructure is, is really, really, so.
I think the other, the other piece is that, since we put this into place, and I remember when we didn't have it and when we did have it. We're not leaving it up to, the ve, decisions about replacing vehicles don't necessarily get left to popularity or to chance. Or to whatever, they get done on some kind of reasonable schedule that's consistent and is based on the need of the, for the vehicles.
Yeah, I mean, I just think it's worth considering, because it would be a one-year fix and it could be addressed with this. Magical amount of free cash money that we're supposed to be receiving at some point. We gotta make some hard decisions somewhere. So, let's, can we go, so if we go back, so, so where were you, Sean, you're at seventy-two thousand?
Seventy-two, seven thirty-two.
Seventy-two, so that's just the school, and then, then we can take Lydia's stuff, which is twenty-nine, forty, one ninety-eight and fifty-one, thirty-nine?
Can we?
Eighty-two hundred.
We're hoping so. So, that gets us to what?
Eighty thousand, eight eleven.
Okay.
Assuming that we can do that.
Assuming that, that we can, that we can do that, we're not gonna touch the, the, the Justin thing. So, there's our, there's our operating, operating budget.
So, beyond that, you're suggesting we need to cut a hundred thousand dollars beyond that problem?
Right, so if you took two ninety-three and we get a hundred thousand out of loans, that's one ninety-three. And then you're talking.
A hundred and ten.
So, a hundred and ten thousand, so, so is, so I guess my question is, instead of two percent, can we bring it to. Can we make it a one percent cut and will that get us to that number? Or do we need it to be two percent?
I think, I think you say two right now and to see, cause there's gonna be some.
Easier to go back than it is.
Definitely.
Okay.
Two percent's about a hundred and sixty thousand, or a little bit less.
And there might be some things in that that are just not acceptable to us, I don't, you know, I don't know.
There's gonna be a lot that's not acceptable, but the reality is.
Well, there's a priority list, whatever it is.
You could ask for a point, you could ask for a point and a half and see where that gets you.
We're asking for both, a one and a two, I don't know.
Ask them to build two plans, it's not, it's not astronomical to ask somebody to build two, two separate plans.
Right.
How bold prepared, that's what, that's where we're at, it's.
Yeah. And if we had to do two percent for the school, then, you know, I would feel more comfortable and this is gonna be a lot, larger conversation. Doing just theirs based off of the recommended, everyone else would, would be, you know, um, baseline of last year. But theirs, two percent would be based off of what we decide as a finance committee.
I don't think we can do that.
Alright, well, it, we could prioritize schools.
Definitely.
You know?
Well, what's sad is, I mean, all the departments gave a zero budget.
Yeah.
And then we're getting hit by things that we have no control over, and that's where the cost overruns are, now we gotta try to make it up somehow.
We're, we're also getting hit because, cause, cause we've taken on loans. We've taken on, we're taking on the town hall building project, we, we, we've done these transmission lines, we've rebuilt the sewer plant. We've taken, and, and a lot, we've taken a lot of stuff on in the, in the last bunch of years. And I'm not saying those are bad things, but.
But the town, the town did want those.
What's that?
They are when they're piecemealed.
Yeah.
Because now we're sitting into, we're gonna worry about the next project, you know?
Right.
Right.
And our free cash has been withheld for the last two solid years.
Yes.
And the free cash being withheld hurts. We shouldn't have to be paying extra people for work.
Right.
Absolutely.
So, so we're, so, so finance committee, what do you want? You want a one and a two or one and a half and a two?
Yeah, let's do, uh, let's, well, let's do a one and a two, I mean, we could extrapolate the one and a half between them somehow, right?
One and a two based off their.
Eighteen.
Eighteen budget.
Yeah, cause you, yeah.
Right. Sure, I mean, I think that's way too dramat, I think that's just very dramatic for the school, you know?
If, if you don't, though, you're just, what you're doing is, you're just, if you don't do it that way to begin with, you're just inviting every single person next year to bring in a budget that's five percent more. Than what it is this year, and then say, okay, go ahead, cut it.
Yeah. We, we all understand the point. But that's recommended, though, so they did bring in budgets that were larger than the finance, and then we cut them back.
Right.
To what we thought was like priorities.
To what we thought was like priorities, but.
We had.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I, I just, I just think it's only fair.
Yeah.
So, one and two from eighteen.
Sure. When we meeting, next week?
Sooner the better.
And you can't, I mean, you can't underestimate, I don't think, the impact of, of being, of being forced to be fifty thousand dollars under the levy limit. That has never been the case, I, I'll just tell you, that was for a decade, that was never close to that, we never had a special town meeting, there was never a problem.
I've been suggesting it for years, though, and everyone's like, that's not how it's done.
Is that what Justin's, for DOR, is insisting upon, fifty under?
Right, but that's, that's being insisted upon, because.
Because we've had special town meetings the last three years.
Right, because of what keeps happening. Yeah, what, what I was, yeah, what I'm suggesting is that there was a time when that was not being suggested. You know, and not being done, and when you're talking about, I mean, there's, there's your seventy-two thousand dollars basically right there. That, that's going to nothing. You're, you're not, you're not using it to, you're not spending it on something the town needs, you're just holding on to it in case the accounting is not what we need to be.
Or in case some unexpected expense comes up, you know? And, and it's year after year that we're kinda hoping nothing terrible happens, and at some point, something terrible could happen that costs us a lot of money, and that's why we have things like stabilization that we've already, you know, destroyed, and so, we're just leaving ourselves with few options. And I know that's not here or there, you know, where, 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 where we're at, we can't do anything about.
So, so I'm available the sixteenth and seventeenth next week. I'm actually out at, oh, I, I guess I could be available the nineteenth.
Well, we see what schedules are, I was gonna suggest maybe a little bit later next week, like Wednesday or Thursday, I don't know what the seventeenth, nineteenth is, only because that gives us a whole week to.
Nineteenth, nineteenth is a, is a Thursday, I, I actually am out of town, but I will be back that night, so.
I was just trying to think if, if Edwina's waiting for information to come back from different things, and we're trying.
We're running out of time.
Verify.
I just don't wanna go into the following week.
Right.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
Fine with me.
So, next.
Would you rather do a day earlier, in the case we have to get back the second night, like a Tuesday, Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday?
Monday, Tuesday makes sense, gives everyone a week to get these numbers together, get the one and the two together.
Meet again on Thursday?
Yeah, that sounds.
If it's not necessary, we won't, we won't bother.
Yeah, so, so Tuesday, Thursday, we'll.
Book them.
Book them.
Tuesday and Thursday, okay.
I'm on vacation next week, so.
Huh?
I'm on vacation next week.
You're gone all next week.
Designate yourself to this.
Okay, Betsy should be back, so.
Yep.
Steven, did you have a question?
I have a non-budget, it's not, it's a budget, but not a budget issue, this question, so, the ambulance. So, so as we look at this, as we have the people in the room here, should we be, and, and have, when was the last time that we examined whether it should be an enterprise fund, or we keep playing this surplus and revenue game? Like, we, we have these consultants, we have the DOR on speed dial, and we have this Bay State Municipal Accounting Group. Like, why don't we ask these people what other community, I know what other community's doing, they're doing a wide variety of things, but ask them what, what is the best practice in other places? Are they an enterprise fund, do they recommend we do that with the ambulance here? Are they handling it other way? It seems like what we're doing i- is not fluid, and if, if it takes this many steps to make it work, I think we're not doing it right. And, and obviously, it's the way it's been done for twenty years, is, it, some of you have been around here a long time. Did, did the enterprise fund discussion ever happen? Did you recall? We talked about it.
Enterprise funds work great, as long as nothing ever goes wrong. So, I mean, we have.
And that's, I mean, that's why I ask, 'cause I think it's a discussion.
I mean, if you look at water and sewer, I, I mean, like, it's, we've had enterprise, enterprise funds are good as long as they are enterprise funds, and they pay for themselves. The day they don't, then, then it's not even an enter, it's not enterprise.
Yeah, water and sewer, it's, are two enterprise funds, they don't pay for themselves.
Right.
They haven't paid for themselves in years.
It might have on day two or something, when all the infrastructure was new, you know, like.
Right.
But, I mean, that's the.
We can't possibly jack the rate.
When everything gets straightened out, the ambulance theoretically is paying for itself. And, and so it would, it, it might meet that model, and this, this is obviously the group of people that have in the room, and that's why I bring it up. Is, is it something that we think we should at least look into, speak to Justin, speak to the others about it, and say, hey, what are others doing? Maybe it's time that we, we change our system, 'cause I, I think the current system is not right, I think we're not doing it right. And, and Derek indicates it, because there needs to be votes that aren't happening, or didn't happen for thirty years. And, and so I think we just need to get it right, and I would rather it not be an issue that continues, comes up every year, it's something that we address and resolve and put to bed, and, and not make it a problem of this committee or any committee.
So, paying for itself, does that include the lease on, on ambulances?
You know, it should, I'll be honest with you, it should, and, and, and can it now? No, not right now.
First two ambulances, we bought out of, we, we, we bought out of the, um.
We did, and, 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 but they also, there was a lot of, there was a lot of fair amount of donation money that went into that fund.
For the first one, but after that, we, ambulance revenue built up, and we, we paid for most of the ambulance out of that.
Um, and, and would it pay for a lease, so a lease right now would be forty-nine thousand dollars a year for seven years if we leased an ambulance today? Uh, Phil, Phil got some figures for me, we worked together on that. Yeah, it could possibly do that, can it do it this year? No, we, we really have to stick, and we have the lease on the, on the paramedic equipment, which we are gonna absorb. You know, we can absorb that, I talked to Marlene about that, I've talked to Ed about that, you know, we can absorb that if we have to, and, and I even talked to Capital about that. Yeah, it can happen, but we obviously can't, it's not the golden goose.
Yeah.
You know, it can't get you this, this year and, and something else. Like, we need to be, we need to be baby steps with it, we've taken baby steps in the last few years, we've made a lot of improvements, it, it's just we keep these baby steps, but, yeah.
The only concern I think you might have generally with an enterprise fund like that would be, is, to me, it feels like if it's truly an enterprise fund, then that means if it doesn't make enough revenue, then you're gonna do without it somehow.
Right.
And is that the que, is that what you're gonna do? If the ambulance doesn't make enough money to pay for itself, or is the town gonna say, well, then we just have less ambulance? It doesn't seem like that's what we're gonna do, what we're gonna do is we're gonna get the town to subsidize it somehow.
I would suggest that I do have that question up to Justin right now, to make sure that, that when we're looking at, at the end of the year, whatever surplus is left that was funded out of the ambulance fund, how do we get it back in there correctly? I would say before we look at other options, was looking, see what we're supposed to do going forward now.
Right.
And make sure that we're doing that.
Oh, absolutely.
And then running the plan will be there.
And, and I would rather have this discussion next year about this, 'cause we have.
Oh, yeah, no, it's in that, definitely a future discussion, I just thought this is the room, these are the people that, that said, to hear some, some thoughts on it, you know, instead of, well, I'll talk to this person next week and that person a week after that, and, and we just can hear, hear people's thoughts, and some of you have obviously some historical knowledge. Thanks, thank you.
Okay.
So, next Tuesday? Wanna look at the warrant articles?
Is there any money on it?
Are there still articles in them? Sure. There are, as I see them right now.
There are money.
Are they even really relevant?
Worth it?
And those are on this tab here.
Well, you'd have to get, you have to get a motion out.
I don't think we can read all these questions about money that we don't know that we have.
Sorry, buddy. So, next Tuesday at six-thirty, is that right?
Yeah.
And tentatively for Thursday, you wanna just throw that on there, so every, it's not a last minute, uh, what if?
You know what, there are not that many articles.
I just wanted to add here that Monday is Patriots' Day.
Right.
So, I don't know if that means that changes anybody's schedule in terms of how talks.
Yeah, the cows don't work that day. They're off.
And I don't go to the Red Sox anymore on Patriots' Day like I used to.
I'm not worried about you guys, no, thank you. I'm worried about people getting back to Marlene and DePita, just wanna put that out there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I would, I would assume everybody's heard.
Yeah, Marlene's gonna put the notice out, um, asking people to pop something together and send it back to us before, even if they get it too, well, I would say before Friday, that, that would be what I asked for, so, yeah.
Yes.
A one percent and two percent difference, okay?
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I'm gonna go over the articles next week.
Oh, you don't wanna do it tonight?
Or do you want?
I don't care.
There's not that many articles, so.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, we'll just do it quickly, so, that's okay.
Yeah.
And, and the other, there are other reasons, Daryl, it's, it's another choice, a chance for people on TV to, to see it.
Town people need them.
Yeah. Alright, so Article one is the usual, choose the necessary town officials for the following year, so I don't think I have to read that. There will be a question, Marlene, did you give me something that had new language, or is it the separate sheet tonight about question one?
Oh, yes, the, um, memo to the town regarding, so I got, um.
An updated.
Input back from, um, legal counsel.
Yep.
Um, the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee had talked about splitting that, uh, the question into statute. Um, has it set up as one question, and he had said that he believes it can be separate.
So, alright, so what you have is a stapled sheet in front of you, shows question one, but this afternoon, we got something that's taking that question one and splitting it into two separate questions, okay? So, I'll just read it for the townspeople. Shall the town vote to have its elected town treasurer and town collector?
Right, and that was just done earlier today, so I have to update the warrant with that.
Yeah.
Become a combined appointed town treasurer collector of the town of Hatfield, yes or no? And then question two would be, shall the town vote to have its elected town treasurer and town collector positions become a combined town collect, treasurer collector position? So, one question is, should they be combined? The other question is, should they be elected or appointed? That's, that's the gist.
Okay.
Are they already combined?
No, well, uh, no, the, the, the last person it held, it held both positions, but it was one first, same first.
Yeah, but both posi, but the wording will have both positions in the question.
Yeah, it's, it's, it, the article will be changed for our, for Tuesday, so.
Did it give that to you?
You gave me this one.
Does that confuse townspeople?
Well, I, I don't know.
Because, I mean. Certainly, well, my personal recommendation would be to combine them and make it an appointed position, but I guess it does give the option to combine them and make it be elected, right?
Correct. Could we have it be one? Is there something stopping us?
It was one, but then the Finance Committee and Selectmen asked to, if they could be split up.
Oh, I don't remember that, maybe I wasn't here.
We'll figure it out.
Let's, let's think about that, okay. Next article.
Article two, um, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer, uh, forty-six thousand dollars for the purpose of funding community preservation revenues.
That should probably come off of there.
Is that our repayment?
Wait until a special town meet, that's a repayment.
That's our repayment, two CPA, because the funding came out of.
But I have not plugged that in up here.
Alright, so we'll put a, that might, we'll, might hold off on that, 'cause it's a financial article.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, and we don't have any money for that.
Yeah, that's not gonna happen.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, federal grants, yep, number three, yep, okay, Article four, same as always, okay. Article five, to see if the town will vote to appropriate two hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars as maybe the town's transportation bond. Yep, chapter ninety, same as always. Elect positions collector into one position, another, another article regarding, um, combining the collector and treasurer position.
You have to have the articles and the question.
Right.
So, the two articles, I just hadn't updated the question.
Okay.
Right, those questions are for the ballot box.
Right.
Not, not for town meeting, I should have clarified.
Yes.
Right, so if the board approves those two questions, then I will update this front page.
Gotcha, okay. Another article with the same thing, uh, okay, so here's an article, um, by the selectman, to see if the town will vote to have the selectman appoint a town government study to explore the structure of the chief elected officers of the town to increase its current three-member board of selectmen to five-member board of selectmen.
Why do we need the study, why can't we just ask the town whether they wanna do that or not?
Well, that's kinda what we're saying, I mean.
I thought that was gonna be, I thought that was gonna be a question.
The question was to see if the town had any interest in the board in, in, in going that way, but it wasn't a question to make the decision on May eighth as to go from three to five. We wanted to bring information back as to the pros and cons or whatever.
Oh, so it gives a year, essentially, to study it, look at it, unpack.
Find out if you have to vote, do you have to change your charter, do you have to change this, do you have to do whatever?
Okay.
Um, the argument I had made at our lab, not argument, the, the, what I was using as, um, information was, you know, the planning board, the school committee, I mean, most committees have five members, and it just, you know, things can keep plugging along if there's any sort of issues with one person absent or, or what have you, so. It also allows at least two members to be in the same room at the same time without having to post a meeting, which, which really is a drag. I mean, you remember, Daryl, Ed too, I mean, you just can't, uh.
I, I misunderstood, because I thought it was gonna be like question two and not an article.
It's gonna be an article to see if the town wants us to move forward, and part of the response we get from that, from the state, from a legal perspective, might be, do you also have to have a ballot question for it?
Okay, well, I.
This isn't gonna make it a five-member board.
I thought it was, okay.
It's just gonna, it's just gonna, should we look into it?
When you presented it before, I thought it was gonna be a ballot question, that's why.
It could ultimately be a ballot question, but not, not this election. It depends what they tell us we have to do.
You might have to get, let, special legislation.
Pardon?
You might have to get special.
Well, that's what I mean, it's, it's not as easy as just going that night and saying, should we go from three to five? And I think, regardless of how townspeople feel about it, I think you need to have the story and say, here's the reasoning, and what do you wanna do? Versus, you know, I, I know there was an attempt, uh, a question last year, a petition, but, you know, there was no background to it, I, I don't know that it, people had a feel for, for the process, so. General bylaw articles, uh, what, are the revolving funds?
This is to add a new section to the, uh, bylaws, this is required.
The town bylaws.
Mass general laws now, that your revolving fund has to be a bylaw.
Yep, okay. Donations, um, uh, make donations to the, um, three hundred and fiftieth anniversary committee.
Okay.
Right, and that's being researched.
Yep, yeah, and then some zoning bylaws, uh.
The planning board has submitted a letter.
We're gonna grow.
About the cannabis.
Is one of you are growing someone here?
About cannabis, so I'm not gonna read it all.
Probably make more money doing that, I don't know, eating milk and cows.
Oh, the end of these articles?
Yeah.
Marijuana one?
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, it, well, right, so another article along that's about the regulations, amend the bylaws, and it's the different, whether it's cultivation, outdoors, greenhouse, let's get more information on that, we'll go through it. Yeah, is this one, Sean?
See if the town will to accept mass laws, chapter sixty-four N, so, section three.
Yep, chapter fifty-five acts.
So, what's that allow us to do, collect taxes? On.
Local tax.
On, on, on marijuana sales.
Yes.
Okay.
Of course. Yeah, I'm okay.
The finance may wanna vote to recommend that.
Right now, yeah.
Get that one over with?
Thirty percent tax?
Just wanna get to work.
See if the town vote to raise, transfer to a sum of eleven hundred dollars, um, that's just a pass bill, and you have to go to town, um, meaning to take care of the previous.
That has to be paid, um, we, we're not gonna have the money, um.
Yeah, we don't have the money for it, but we have to pay for it.
Right.
Yep.
You got it, uh, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars, same thing for another, uh, bill. Another one. Then we're into the CPA articles, so. Yeah, you're right, Daryl, I mean, there's not a whole heck of a lot.
No.
The CPA articles are, are similar as far as the transfers, um, they look to make, and then, um, I'll just go through a couple of the articles. So, see if the town vote to appropriate transfers from CPA, uh, for ninety-six thousand, ninety-six thousand, four hundred dollars contributed to cost to create an athletic field at Smith Academy. This would be to, um, put a field hockey field at Smith Academy with school funds and CPA funds, and move the, move the playing field from behind the center school.
To the baseball field?
No, new, new area, behind the baseball field. No, new, new area, behind the baseball field.
Behind the baseball field, okay, cool.
Yeah, and if this passes, at this point, we're not hiring a general contractor, we're gonna do everything under Phil's license, so he'll be running the show for that, so, that's gonna be quite a savings there, so.
Oh, yeah, big.
And the rest of the funds would come out of school choice, so there wouldn't be any, no taxation or anything. They would still use that field for now for a practice field behind.
Yeah.
But that would, that would ultimately become the field hockey field up here, and, you know, they can start field hockey at a younger age, you know, you know, all the youth sports type thing. CPA space, five thousand for community gardens, that's over on Billings Way. Fifteen thousand from CPA to remove and control invasive species on town-owned and controlled parcels purchased with CPA. They're working with Open Space, yeah.
In regards to the five thousand dollars for the creating new garden.
Yep.
You may want to check that, because it was voted to be a cemetery, part of cemetery plot, and it was voted a number of years ago to do that, I don't know if this is gonna.
Being a back half, it would be further out.
Yeah, it was all part of that land.
They did check, and they checked with the Cemetery Committee and, yeah, all those folk, Bob?
We as a Cemetery Commission have already approved that.
Oh, I forgot you were on that.
Oh.
Yep.
Yep.
Thanks, Ed. And then Open Space, borrow thirty-two thousand dollars, so this looks like it's a reimbursement, this is for recreational trails grant.
Yeah.
Right, I talked with Mark Delott, they anticipate construction starting in August.
Yep.
For this?
But this is.
The trail.
Right, so is this, is this a loan we're gonna have to take out and then turn around and pay it once it's a grant?
Borrowing, when the money comes in, I understand when it starts to come in, then we can.
But, but since they won't start it till August, we won't.
Right.
Have to pay for it until.
There are plenty of trails around our.
The following July, but in theory, it would be a loan in anticipation of grant funding, so.
Correct.
We could, we should pay for it next year before we even have to actually borrow the money, isn't that correct? Right? August, you'd have to borrow money to start, so it might be just interest that you pay.
August of nineteen.
Right, August of nineteen.
August of the nineteen budget.
But you don't have to, we don't have to make any principal payments until July of twenty.
Yeah, the following year.
And by that time, the grant hopefully would have taken care of the principal, so all we would be responsible would be for the interest that we incurred during the year.
The nine months or whatever.
Is that? Okay.
If you want with a two-part, Darryl, would that work? You know, use thirty-two thousand of the CPA funding, and then the second part of that, when it comes in, we use the second part.
This isn't CPA.
No, this one came out of Open Space.
Came out of Open Space.
Yep.
Yeah, we, we just want to be really careful with these, because.
There's too much problem.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm not opposed to the project, I just want to make sure we set it up in the budget right.
Right. Right, the Anniversary Steering Committee looking for a twenty-five thousand dollars to put in their, in their budget as far as moving forward with the activities associated with the three-hundred-and-fiftyth anniversary in two thousand and twenty.
Yeah.
Transfer some of money from fiscal year two thousand and eighteen ambulance surplus to the ambulance fund.
Yeah.
See if the town determines, sounds like we're raising appropriate, and then.
Then it's the budget.
Then it's the budget.
So, so, can we check into how we would, how we would potentially, can we get some information on ways that we could potentially not delay town meeting, but.
Continue?
Continue town meetings, so we could take up the budget in June, once the audit is done and we have free cash, and, or at least the audit is done?
Right, so we, we know you can continue the town meeting, because we've done it before. I think what we probably want to verify or clarify is how long can you do it for, and, and does it make sense? So right now, right now, it's scheduled for May eighth.
Right.
The one we've ever extended was.
You do the next, yeah. So is that your question, Darryl?
Well, yeah, and, and what would be the other option is, is there a way to postpone town meeting until June?
First, you know, whatever, I'm just making up a date.
Or is that, it's a bylaw thing?
Yeah, it's a charter. It's part of bylaw, and we have to build.
That might be something in future years that we might want to take up and.
If nothing else, you could open it.
Have a special town meeting, right?
And then.
You could do that.
And then.
Could open it, close it.
And then continue it.
See, what we've always kept it around that May, because of the cherry sheet coming in, the money's coming in.
Oh, yeah, no.
It was always that.
Most cities and, or most towns, that's what.
More election, because that way.
May's, they're busy, yeah.
People that were there in office were supporting that, that budget, and if they got not reelected or whatever, then.
Right.
The blue person's gonna have to support it, and they won't know anything about it.
Right.
But a lot of towns have.
Shifted a little bit.
Shifted that because of just the issue we're running into, because we have to make a lot.
You don't have accurate figures.
What?
Which essentially.
We don't.
The issue, I mean, yeah, the issue traditionally has been that you don't have cherry sheet figures, you don't even have.
Yeah. You just have House One.
That's a crucial part of this whole budget.
Yeah, but although late, I mean, over the last, I don't know, the last ten years anyway, probably, they've been pretty accurate, whatever came in in the House One budget has been pretty much what's happened.
Do we have a House One budget in here, or the governor's?
We have the gov, the House.
House should be meeting, are they meeting this week?
It's at the middle of this month, they'll have their.
So that number will be more accurate than the governor's number.
It probably will be, yeah.
So that might, maybe that, hopefully that increases a little bit, but we'll see.
Hopefully there's a one, two-hundred thousand dollars.
Carrie, did you want to say something?
Not that anybody in here probably will agree with this, but just a thought is, and I've said this, I brought this up to our town moderator before, but lots of towns have changed their town meeting also from the middle of the week at night to a Saturday. And I just think in our town, our seniors don't come because it's dark, it be, they don't like to drive, our younger generation don't come to town meeting because they have children and there's no childcare. I just think it's something that we as a town should be considering, is having for one Saturday out of the year, to do it in the morning, on a Saturday morning, so people have more options, and we might be able to get some high school kids to do a childcare thing in the school and break out a couple classrooms down to being different generations of kids, you know what I mean, so they're not all in one pack. You might see more people actually attend our town meetings and actually participate in our town government and be more involved than we do now. And, I mean, we have younger generations that are running for school committee now and other positions in this town, which is great, because that's what we should be doing, but too many people, I think, are uninformed in the, because they don't have the ability to come to these meetings or sit and wait for it to be on television, and if on a Saturday morning, for one time out of the year, for them to get to come and sit and listen to what's going on and maybe have an understanding of what's happening, it might be time for us to change a little bit, just a thought. I mean, you guys, none of you here might be thinking that that's a great suggestion, but it's something to consider, since we're talking about postponing anyways possibly because of waiting for numbers, maybe we should consider trying this year on Saturday morning and see if people, maybe nobody attends, and if they don't, then switch it back.
So we have to amend the bylaws, because the bylaw calls for it to be.
We did talk about that.
Well, then, okay, so that has to happen, that bylaw changing has to happen at town floor, or does the bylaw change?
Yeah, and if the bylaws just state that, then we would have to amend the bylaw.
Okay, so, I'm just, it's just a thought, and I only because we're all talking about different things, but I just think it'd be great to have more of our younger generation getting involved in our town politics and our town stuff. And I think part of it is because we're, a lot of us are stuck at home with our, not stuck at home is the wrong word, we're home with our children at night, and childcare costs a fortune to be able to go to meetings like this.
Now, did we talk about doing something next year, and June, moving it up?
We, actually, when we had the meeting in Worcester, I believe, we, that came up, that there's municipalities who are, are holding off until later in June to have their town meeting.
Right, because you have more accurate numbers, more concrete numbers.
You have better numbers.
Now, I think the darkness is, is a very legitimate issue, and could be one of discrimination, you know, I volunteer for Highland Valley Elder Services, and the number of, you know, elderly people who will not, cannot drive at night is much more than you'd think, you know, it certainly limits a lot of people's ability to participate.
Can we petition? I could, we could pull and do petition to get the signatures to have it on town meeting this year to switch it, could we not? To have it be brought into the discussion?
It's up to the Board of Selectmen, if they want to accept.
They would have to.
Selectmen don't have anything to say about that petition.
Right.
It wants to submit, submitted by the public.
It's more about the clerk saying it's gotta be by a certain date.
Right, there's a certain date.
She, as long as she didn't file her paper.
And we don't read it either, if I'm not mistaken, whoever the petitioners are.
The petitioner reads it.
Or we can read the article, but we don't second it, or, I don't know, something, because we did that last year, we had one.
You can put on courtesy or.
Yeah, however, when somebody else can speak to it, yeah.
But, um, but. If you just changing the date from the.
I, I'll be a devil's advocate for, if I could, just for a second, I personally don't have a problem, because my kids are grown up.
Right.
Saturday is probably no different than any other day of the week where parents are bringing their kids to basketball, or soccer, or baseball, so I certainly don't have a problem trying it. I just think there's no perfect day or time of day for this, and I think if people want to come, they're gonna come. I mean, it's advertised well enough of when we're having a town meeting, the articles are out there, all these things now with John, it's on TV, it's on YouTube.
Yeah.
I think people are making conscious decisions.
Yeah, I, and I'm not, I'm not saying it's.
Something that might be preventing people from coming could be the time of day, because they can't drive at night and having children, that they need childcare.
And we make no arrangements, even at our nighttime thing, to have childcare for parents to be able to come with kids.
I think that's a great idea.
Maybe that would be a good first step.
So maybe, maybe this year, we do it that way and see if more people actually attend, that they have the opportunity to bring their kids, but again, it's a school night, and most kids are younger.
You're not gonna bring your kids out there at nine, nine-thirty, you know, which is the problem.
Yeah, yeah.
And maybe with the, with the elderly and the darkness issue, it could be a transportation gig.
Well, maybe the council and agent could look at transportation, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's a, yeah, money, I know where's the money gonna come from, but.
I don't know.
I love the suggestion, but.
Yeah.
You guys are loaded with great ideas. Bob?
To go along with what Carrie's saying, the, the childcare and the timing, what I've seen in the last few years is that the attendance at the beginning is not so much the problem, it's that once their article is heard, they're bailing out.
Yeah.
In the last three years, we have actually barely held a forum to do the final budget.
Mm-hmm.
And unfortunately, we've also now, because there's been a lot of discussion, and this year's articles seem a little bit lighter, because we don't have money, but we end up getting to the point that we're basically deciding the budget with eighty people in the room, and it's nine-thirty at night, and it's like, yep, yep, just go, just go, just go, hundred and one minds, we're done. Nobody wants to question it, because everybody is sick and tired and they want to go home, because they've now sat here for the better part of two and a half hours.
That's the plan.
To me, that I don't think is fair for the rest of the thirty-four hundred people in town, that eighty people are setting the budget and nobody seems to question anything. And on that note, I think nobody questioning anything is why we're in the predicament that we're in, because we're, not enough people are ultimately looking at these numbers and bringing up questions. We've clearly had some issues in the last few years, so I think it goes hand in hand if not enough people are there to start questioning and saying, why was there an eighteen thousand dollar increase in this line?
Of course, of course, to joke, to, to, not to speak for the moderator, but these are public meetings that we're, that we're meeting almost weekly on.
Correct.
And people have the opportunity, they can see it on YouTube, they can call any one of us, I agree, I don't have a problem with moving that article up, but there is opportunity for people to come to meetings and to ask questions.
Right.
But it's also hard to set, it's hard to move the budget article further up into the meeting, if, if that's a.
You gotta do the rest of it before you do that.
Because you don't know what's already.
Right, because if anything else happens, yeah.
So it's that catch twenty-two.
Right.
But I, I've just seen it the last three or four years, it's like, you got a bunch of people there, because there's one article that everybody's hot to trot about.
Sure.
And then the minute that's done, it's a mass exodus, and then we're left with barely, and let's face it, we have, nobody's called for a count.
People suffer.
I'm not so sure we've even had a forum technically to set the budget the last couple of years, it's been, it's very tight.
And I've always been.
We do have to worry about.
And I've always been bothered by that whole line about, you know, if you want to have something to say, you know, make sure you come to these type of meetings. We have town meeting for, for a reason, and lots of people have extremely busy lives, so that's kind of unreasonable to, you know, be like, pay attention to all these meetings if you want to have a say on, on the budget. I just don't think that's fair, you know, for a lot of people.
How else are they gonna know about it?
No, no, he's saying that they should get to say it at town floor.
Yeah, we present and we talk.
Whereas a lot of the times, people get up to discuss things at town meeting, and it's kind of like they're, they're shushed, and they're pushed up, and it's kind of dismissed sometimes, and it has been, not always, but some stuff is like, oh, well, we've been discussing this for months, and now this is where we're at.
Yep.
And no, your point doesn't matter, because we discussed it for six months. That's what he's saying, is that people should get to just say their point at town floor, as much as having to attend these meetings.
Because let's realize that it's not like things have gone great, so we do need to look at how we can do things differently, which I appreciate this discussion for that reason, so.
This discussion's been going on for fifty years.
So I can't stand town government. It is. Yeah, but it's much better in state or federal government, let me tell you.
We're all good.
I can't stand any of them.
Guys have any more questions, or? So Tuesday at six-thirty, and tentatively Thursday at six-thirty, let's see how Tuesday goes, is that?
Sure. Yeah, but let's, Marlene will post us for both.
Yes.
And then department heads will get a letter tomorrow or an email telling them one percent and a two percent budget decrease from their eighteen budget. And, and those that, obviously, those like the school that contributed money for the special town meeting, that's, it's, they're full.
The correct numbers are there.
The correct numbers, yeah.
Ladies, did you have anything to?
Did you have Marlene check all the numbers, make sure they're dried?
I will, but I think what's, you know, frustrating for, for all of you, you're looking at the spreadsheet, every, every work page, every page in this workbook has formulas, it's form.
Right.
It's formatted, and you don't have those formulas, you, you're just looking at a hard copy.
Right.
So you're looking, see, they, they, the formulas are, come from different directions.
I know, the last one that changed formulas is Louise, five years ago, two weeks ago.
She changed the formulas?
Some of them she changed in the near by to, to make it right, they were worse than they was a number of years ago, I don't know if Darryl, if you remember that, I think you.
Don't read, don't, specific, I mean, we certainly look, I mean, you look at all the cells and, and what feeds it, part of the problem is the eighteen budget is copy and pasted on, that's, and, and we just have to make sure.
I will check those totals.
And we just have to check those, those totals, because those, but how it impacts nineteen, I mean, it shouldn't impact the nineteen budget that we have.
Shouldn't.
Right, in essence, what we're saying, the nineteen budget numbers are correct, what could be, could be, just a could be issue, is what might have been brought over from eighteen, so when you're looking at it, it, it's just not necessarily.
Right. And I understand you'd like to see the, the total changes, the, the column that has the changes.
Yeah.
Yeah, total would be a total.
But it, yes, it is, if you look at the formula, it's coming from the left.
Yeah, you just have to be careful, because some of that may feed back to, to, to the first page, and if it feeds back to the first page and changes one of those numbers.
Yeah, my concern is if you start making changes, it could be a domino effect.
I know Terry Williams is gonna be here Thursday for your financial team meeting, and hopefully.
I will talk to him.
That'll be a great, an opportunity to talk to him about that.
And when Terry's here, wouldn't it, would it be possible to make a copy of that workbook, right?
He has it, I sent it to him.
I mean, in, in other words, you, you kind of have one you can fiddle around with to see if something is noticeable versus without touching the real thing, you know.
Tell us both?
But, and it might be absolutely fine.
The column should add up properly.
Save us ten bucks.
Change from eighteen to nineteen can only be one number.
There, um. Does anybody have anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, John.